Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting Tuesday, December 7th, 10th. It's good to have you all here this morning. We have a lot of things on the agenda, so we'll go ahead and get started. Commissioner Ward, could you please lead us in prayer and pledge today?
Yes. Lord, we come to you today as we conduct our county business. We pray as our Christmas season is fastly approaching, we wish you a happy birthday. We pray for everyone in the room. We pray for everyone in our community. We pray for anyone and everyone out there, Lord, that just needs your healing hand, your touch. We pray for everybody and to just have a great Christmas and a safe Christmas and a very prosperous and happy new year. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Let me lead this to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rowland, there's nothing that needs to be added to the agenda this morning, is there?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. Nothing from myself, nothing from Aaron. I will tell you, if for a couple hours this morning, I'm a little distracted, the FONDAS, the solid waste, animal control, parks and rec, they are the first recipients of the new phone system, the new Office 365 teams phone system, and it's being done as we speak. So there's help, help, help texts, I guess. I'm trying to coordinate between, I got three different vendors I'm coordinating to get this done. So if you run out the room, that's what it's about, sir.
All right, just know we might wait till you get back. It depends on what we're talking about.
No, that's fine.
It's all good. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's published.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crowe, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
There's gonna be an item underneath planning and zoning on a dock that's coming up. Do I have to pull it out at this time of the meeting or can I do?
No, you can pull it when we get to that point.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I did it.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, payment of county bills.
Amen.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion, commissioners? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also a five oh vote. All right, up next, we're gonna do some awards and recognitions. Mr. Rex Penicuff, if you would come forward, please. And I want to read the resolution that the board can then vote to adopt. Whereas Rex Penicuff is the son of Charles and Lana Penicuff, the husband of Jamie Penicuff, and the father of Braylon. Whereas Rex Penicuff runs and manages his parents' business Fisherman's Choice and Get the Scoop Ice Cream Shop. Whereas Franklin County is president of the East Point Volunteer Fire Department and an active member of the East Point Civic Club and will soon be retiring from the Tourist Development Council Board, December 2024, after being an active member since February of 2013. Whereas Rex Penicuff has been given the gift of a second chance after spending three months in intensive care, overcoming a double ventilator, sepsis, pneumonia, and blood clots in his lungs. He continued to fight despite the odds and stands before us today, a walking miracle. May you continue to heal and take each day as a blessing, basking in the love shown from your community, from your friends, and from your family. Nor therefore be it resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to sincerely thank Rex Penicuff for his service as a TDC member and his commitment and love to Franklin County and the community. This resolution adopted this 17th day of December 2024. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Yeah, I was gonna say, don't go nowhere because you don't come take a picture first.
Okay. I just want to say, you know, it's been an honor to serve the county in this manner, you know, and I'm looking forward to serving, continuing to help. I appreciate everything the commissioners do. It's, you know, sometimes I know y'all get a not much thanks for everything, but I appreciate everything y'all do. And like this says, I really love this community. And y'all see me coming back, fighting for things that I think that East Point needs and Franklin County, and looking forward to serving again in the future.
Yeah. Anyone have anything, anyone say to Mr. Penicuff?
Mr. Chairman, just thank you for everything that you've done for our community. And I know you're gonna continue to fight for our community. And you obviously know where I am if you ever need me for anything. So congratulations.
Rex, I love you. I went to school with your mama.
Yep.
We're good friends. But I'm gonna tell you something. You are a survivor.
Yep.
You are a miracle in this county. That pulled Franklin County together and they prayed, 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 and look standing here. That's what prayers, the power of prayer can do. So keep it up, keep up the fight. We're behind you.
You know, that was something that, with everything I went through, there was times, there was three and a half weeks that I don't remember anything. But I'd wake up in turmoil and I'd ask for prayer. And when prayers would go up, I'd get peace and I'd go back to rest.
Yeah.
You know, and it's a testament to the power of God and the power of a community behind you, supporting you and praying for you and uplifting you. And just the way they rallied around me was really special.
Well, Rex, I will say this. We've known each other for a long time. What I like about you is the consistency of knowing when I come and talk to Rex Penicuff, he's gonna be the same as he was last time I talked to him. His consistent voice is not wavering, is not up here one day and wave or somewhere else the next day. You're consistent in your walk, consistent in your conversation, and sir, it's something I've tried to model my life after, and I appreciate you in every way.
Rex, thank you for 11 years of service in TDC for, and, you know, I kept track of you quite a bit there. But anyway, I want to thank you for everything you've done and continue to be in your ear from time to time. Your advice is very well needed at times, I can tell you. And thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
Rex, I was looking at my sheet right here, 2013 to 2024, 11 years. That's a long time to serve. You've always been a person that people can talk to and give them the truth. And sometime that is not the case these days. You're pretty straightforward and we know that we're gonna get the truth from you. Thank you for serving and continue to fight for our people in this county.
Thank you.
Come forward, sir. Let's take some pictures. Oh, I'm sorry. Just couldn't even read what's in there. Not bad. Sorry. We don't do this every day.
I know.
We also want to present you with this plaque. It says, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, appreciation award proudly presented to Rex Penicuff for the immeasurable years of dedication and goodwill to the Franklin County Tourist Development Council Board, to Franklin County and the Franklin County community.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Got any? I'll text you guys my picture. John, you gonna?
One more person, Rex wants to talk to you. Oh, if you wanted, you don't have to.
I remember John back when we was having them good old days in college where we may have skipped more classes and played more video games than we learned, but...
The truth always comes out.
We learned to love the computers back then, too. Commissioners, and I appreciate the second that Michael gave me. Rex has been an instrumental part of the TDC for almost since its inception. He has been the, one of the voices. Sometimes it'll say the one thing that nobody else will say.
That's right.
We had two on the TDC board. One was Ms. Beverly Hewitt, the other one was Rex. We don't give away the chocolate cake. I think it's one of the comments that's been made a couple of times. But I appreciate his service on the TDC board immensely because he was the one constant that you could always go to, that had been there and seen the different things that has been done and been tried. And he was always there to give advice. He doesn't, didn't hesitate in between transitions at all either. And he was there to make sure that we continued to move forward. And one of the reasons we've been successful is because of Rex Penicuff, and we appreciate him and look forward to working with him in the past because just because you retired doesn't mean we stop calling.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Rick Watson. Mr. Rick, I'm gonna read this resolution of appreciation here into the public record. Whereas Richard Watson is married to Martha Gerardi Watson, a classical violinist, and has lived on St. George Island for the past 32 years. Whereas Richard Watson has many noteworthy achievements to be proud of, he's served as a Franklin County Commissioner from 2015 to 2016, representing District One, and served as the Vice Chair of the Williams Memorial Hospital Board. Whereas Richard Watson has given extraordinary service as the Franklin County Tax Collector for eight years and has added several services such as driver's license, concealed weapons licenses, and initiated the kids' tag art competition. Whereas Richard Watson has earned the utmost respect and shown great leadership and modernization in his role as the Franklin County Tax Collector. Now therefore be it resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to express its deepest appreciation to Richard Watson for his years of service to Franklin County and for your support in countless Franklin County community programs and charity events. Franklin County wishes you the best in your future endeavors. This resolution adopted this 17th of December 2024. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Crowe, and a second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank the county commission, too, for the support that you've given me through the years. I also want to recognize the Clerk's Office, Marcia, and the property appraisers office, all the staff in Rhonda's office. In some counties, the constitutional officers don't always get along. And it's a real blessing in Franklin County that we have been able to get along and move in all the same direction. We are, you know... Oh, I said Michelle. Yeah. I'm sorry. The Clerk's office, past and present. The office is being passed to new leadership. I want to recognize the Tax Collector collect, elect, and there she is, Amy Young. And the new Assistant Tax Collector, Sarah Carter. So, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Anyone have anything you want to say?
Mr. Rick, thank you for your service to our community, not only as a tax collector, but as a former commissioner and on our volunteer board. So, you know, these resolutions and plaques that were given out today to you guys and to Ms. Skipper and you and to Rex, it's really no consolation of the work and the dedication that you've given, you all have given this county for the many, many years that you have. But it's the least we could do to show you guys our gratitude and appreciation. So, thank you.
Mr. Rick, I want to say too, having known you and been introduced to you through what I'm doing, not before then, but through what I'm doing, thank you for always being an individual that, let's just say, we always think there's preconceived notions, but you've always been forthright. You've always been very open every time I've ever talked to you. And I've appreciated the ability to have somebody such as yourself to actually have conversations with sometimes. Because sometimes I was able to talk to you about things that really you were the only one I needed to talk to. You were the one that had the insight I was needing to help serve this county as a commissioner, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Rick, I too want to thank you for your service and thank you for the phone calls, always picking up for me and the guidance that I needed on certain things. I know I told you before, but I can't tell you enough. I appreciate you. I want you to...
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Go ahead. Look at me.
Well, let's see. He was appointed and then he won two elections. And you're the only outside of Sheriff Roddenberry, and I'll have to confer with Ms. Cheryl on this, but I believe you're the only non-local constitutional that I've ever seen in my life here. So that speaks volumes. And in my conversations in the public before I was a county commissioner, you was that guy that brought the driver's license to Franklin County when I had to drive to Gulf County three times with all the paperwork that we forgot. So, anyway, on behalf of the community, on behalf of the county commission, thank you for what you've done. And good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, finally me. Mr. Rick, thanks for what you've done. I served with you on the board when you were on the board. We were a good board. We still are a good board, and we got good representatives. I think it's time for you to take your place where it's supposed to be, and that's with Ms. Martha. And just enjoy life for the rest of the time that you have. And so enjoy your futures, like Otis and everybody said, enjoy your future endeavors. We wish you very much luck in the future and a lot of good graces and blessings. And we will hope to see you around the county.
Thank you.
If you would read that, please, Ms. Courtney.
The board would also like to present you with an appreciation award proudly presented to Richard Watson for the countless years of commitment and leadership to Franklin County Tax Collector's Office, to Franklin County and the Franklin County community, this day, December 17, 2024.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I got you. I already made that agenda. Guys, ready? Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Good?
Yep.
Good coordination.
Thank you.
Good, Ed?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so be advised, Commissioner Sanders has the floor. All right, so be advised, Commissioner Sanders has the floor.
I'm reading you the resolution that we have for Rhonda Melander Skipper. She's sitting right out there in the audience. Come on forward. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper is the daughter of Carlton and Ruth Honey Melander, the wife of Gary Skipper, celebrating fifty years of marriage and counting, the proud mother of Jennifer Daniels and Jamie Melander, and the memma to five grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper worked in the public school system for ten years prior to working at the Property Appraiser's Office, and she also served as a cheerleading coach while working for the school. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper has worked in every capacity, beginning with being hired by John James in nineteen ninety. She was appointed as Chief Deputy in two thousand by Property Appraiser Dorothy Pendleton. She was elected as Property Appraiser in two thousand twelve, where she served for the past twelve years and is the only elected official to serve three terms without ever being on the ballot. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper has always been the first constitutional officer with boots on the ground to evaluate any damage that may have occurred during a natural disaster. In twenty twenty-four, she won the Bo, or the Bob Wobbling Award, which is the most prestigious award given by Property Appraisers Association in the state of Florida. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper, years of dedication to Franklin County and the community will never go unnoticed or be forgotten. She leaves respect, confidence, not only to her employees, but also the citizens of Franklin County. Whereas Rhonda Melander Skipper's immense knowledge of her, of her job and the heart of her goal that leaves a mark on this world that never can be erased. A wise man once said, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure that impacts last in your absence." Rhonda Melander Skipper, you are the living proof that leadership is an action, not a position. Now therefore be it resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to sincerely thank Rhonda Melander Skipper for the thirty-five years of service to Franklin County. This was, a resolution was adopted on this day for you. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Sanders. Darn, I gotta be old if I did all that, so.
Ms. Rhonda, let us, let us vote first. Pleasure of the board?
Same move.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we had a motion to approve by Commissioner Amson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous, five oh.
I have to say, being property appraiser for Franklin County has been more rewarding than I can even begin to explain. Of course, there's always days of trial, but the best part is I was able to meet most everybody that lives from Alligator Point to Appalachia Cola, and I have really, really enjoyed that. I want to thank my husband for standing beside me, my daughter, two son-in-laws, two grandchildren, a bunch of other grandchildren, too. But anyway, thank them for being with me because it hasn't always been fun, Gary will tell you that. And my staff, I've said it before and I'll say it again, the best darned staff any employer could ever have. Working with all you Commissioners, it's just, it's been great. You all have always gone out of your way to help me, to help my office to function in the county how we should, working with my clerk, working with my tax collector. I'm like, Rick, we go to all these conferences and tax collectors and property appraisers fight. If a county's going to function, that can happen. So, anyway, thank you all very much. I love you all, and I will miss you. I'll come back and pester you from time to time, but thank you.
Ms. Rhonda, just like I said, thank you for your service to the community. You've spent a lot of time, like Commissioner Sanders said, boots on the ground, you've met a lot of people, that's your job. You do have a great staff, as well as Mr. Watson, and so thank you, thank you very much for your committed years of service to the county and the people that live in it.
Ms. Rhonda, thank you for your service. I know I haven't, I wasn't able to work with you alone, but I can tell you this, you know, every time I encountered you, you always made me feel welcome, you and your husband, whether it was at the football games or, you know, in parades, doing parades. But I want to say thank you for your service.
Ms. Rhonda, we've known each other for a long time, and all of it wasn't county stuff. But what I've always appreciated about you is you can be really, really sweet, and you can be really, really straight. There's not really a problem for you to do that, but that's a rare, rare in today's world. A lot of people don't know that leadership involves difficult conversations sometimes. Not that you want to have, you know, but
Sure.
if you're going to lead, you're going to lead. So I've always appreciated that about you, and I want to make sure that you, I know you probably know that about yourself, but we wanted to highlight that today.
Straight as. That's a delicate, that's a dog delicate one. And Ms. Rhonda, thirty-five years, let me, when the name John James was just mentioned, I could just hear it now, sugar? You're going to be here for thirty-five years. But no, that's incredible. Thank you for your service to the community. I've only been here just a brief couple of years, we've got to work together, and was mad at me, but I put the fires out in that couple of years, or one of them, anyway.
I remember.
But, you know, all the years with Devon and all of them with the ballgames, I mean, you're just a blessing. Blessing to the community. And thank you for your service.
My, my turn. Rhonda? Yes. We're Kendrick Road all the way. We're Kendrick Road all the way. We lived at the end of Kendrick Road, Kendrick Road, and they moved up there, and those little precious two babies, they were little girls with pigtails, you know, and they'd come down. But the thing that y'all, I don't know if y'all know, Rhonda and Gary feeds ten people on Mondays and give them hot meals. She's always part of the community. This is what the example of leadership is. It's taking care of your friends, your family, and your county. And that's what you've done for thirty-five years, Rhonda, and more, because you did it before you came on there as Property Appraiser. But you know what it is, what it is, you're one of God's servants. And so, thank you, I'm going to be saying, you know that. Oh, I know, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Sanders, I appreciate it very much. Thank you all.
Ms. Courtney, please read that.
The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners would like to present this appreciation award to Rhonda Melander Skipper for the countless years of dedication, commitment, and leadership to Franklin County Property Appraiser's Office, to Franklin County, and to the Franklin County Community.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, do you want to do one with your family first, and then we'll do one with everybody?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
And then we'll do one with all of us together. Help to take a step back, Mr. Gary, it'd be easier.
Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. You never know, we might have to use this for evidence at some point, so, yeah. Ready? Lean back in, Commissioner, lean back in. Yeah, back to Otis. Okay, there we go. Again, I told you, it's an evidence. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Hold on, one more.
Oh, we got it now. They can't, Attorney Schuler got the evidence, they can't deny it.
I think the most important rule is memma, I don't care what they say.
One thing I didn't do, I want to do real quick, recognize my new Property Appraiser -elect, Terry Tipton.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, would we quickly go to the Judge Schuler, actually, Ms. Teresa's here, Judge Schuler had a last minute appointment?
Yes.
Do that, and then we can get to the public hearing.
Okay, that's fine. Public comments?
I'm sorry.
But there are not, there are not any public comments, are there?
Oh, public comments, no. I didn't have any public comments, I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
So we don't have any public comments, go ahead and go to, go ahead and go to the next item.
Give Ms. Teresa a second to get up here, and then. It looked like I didn't plan correctly here for clear.
You're right.
You got the best of two options anyways.
Yes, sir.
Teresa.
Two options.
Teresa.
Ms. Teresa, do you want me to help you all those up?
Judge Russell, well, that's a good day.
This is a hard act to follow, that was wonderful. Good morning, I'm here on behalf of Judge Schuler requesting approval to hang eight frames in the third floor courtroom next door. Several months ago, retired Circuit Judge George Reynolds completed what we finally call the picture project. Judge Reynolds is the circuit's historian, and he has been traveling to all the outlying counties and framing the pictures of past and present county court judges for historical legacy. We have eight frames which would be used, which would be hung using heavy-duty, double-sided Velcro, so no holes in the wall, if you approve. I have brought two examples, and I have all the rest in the office, if you would like to see it after the meeting, for anyone who would like to view it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board?
Same move.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you, board. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I want y'all to look at those two pictures. Honorable Van Russell served from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand eighteen. And now Judge Schuler's serving from two thousand nineteen until present. Two fine men that always has Franklin County in their heart, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about leadership, and that, those two men are the example of leadership, also that, Mr. Watson and Ms. Skipper.
I would have to say, I have been blessed beyond measure. I have worked for both of these gentlemen now for a total of thirty-six years, and it's been my honor.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a quick comment, too. I don't think I've ever seen Judge Van Russell without a bow tie. I don't think I've seen him in a real actual tie, it's always been bow tie. Thank you all.
Attorney Schuler, the public hearing is scheduled for nine fifteen, so we're going to skip that and go to other items on the agenda?
Oh, we didn't vote.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, it was five oh. Here we vote.
If not, all in favor, aye.
We already did that, for real, we did, we voted.
Cheryl was motion, that was the second, we voted.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sanders win the motion, Commissioner Amson made the second. So, the public hearing is scheduled for nine fifteen, so we cannot start it ahead of that time, correct?
It's nine thirty.
We're good to go.
I need to check my glasses. I'm thinking, man, we got time. Sorry. All right, let's go ahead, sir.
All right, Commissioners, this is a public hearing that you authorized and directed me to conduct. The purpose of the public hearing is to pause the effective date of the current business registration license, which otherwise would go into effect January first of two thousand twenty-five. We already have a public record, you already understand the reasons behind the pause. So what this ordinance will do, if adopted, it will pause the effective date and extend that effective date until such time as the board adopts a new ordinance, creating a new effective date for that ordinance. And just for the record, Ms. Courtney has also confirmed with me, and y'all have discussed publicly, there are some other changes that will need to be made at that time, but there's no sense doing it now, we'll just do it all at once at that future date. Unless there's any public comment on the ordinance, you're in a procedural position to take action.
So this time I would call for a public comment. Anyone in the room that wishes to comment publicly before we consider action today? Mr. Rowan, what about attending via Zoom?
Anyone online, attended via Zoom, would like to comment, please indicate by raising your hand, using the raised hand feature on your device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we've called for public comment, and we've received none. What, does anyone have any questions, or what is the pleasure of the board?
I also move to delay this.
Okay, so, motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Amson. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, is that it, sir?
Yes, sir, that concludes the public hearing.
All right, Ms. Ginger Culture, Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, and merry Christmas, early merry Christmas. I probably won't see you guys before then, so I hope each of you have a great Christmas with your families. It's very rare that I get to come before the board without asking for anything, so this is a pleasure for me this morning. I'm actually here to give a quick update on the two TDC positions. You know, back during the summer, we worked really hard on the budget, and we were able to negotiate and compromise the board and the sheriff's office on a salary that I believe we are now seeing the fruits of that come into play because we are at capacity now on the law enforcement side. We've been able to do some successful recruiting, and four of the most recent hires are all locals, and I'm really excited about that because those are from families who are vested in our community, who are third and fourth generations, who have built here and made their lives here, so the chances of them staying and making a career are really, really positive, and that excites me. The two TDC positions, one was filled with Holly Polus Rigsby. She is, knew her as a young girl, had forgotten about her, she's all grown up and went to school and is starting a career in law enforcement, and the other is Tyler Linderman, he is part of the Richards family, so I'm excited that they're going to be coming on as the two TDC positions. And then we also have a few locals that have just recently graduated from law enforcement and two that are soon to be graduating. And just on a personal note, I just think it's just exciting for me because I've been with the sheriff's office for twenty-four years, so I've seen a lot of faces come and go. And two of our most recent hires, one, their grandfather worked for the sheriff's office, then their father worked for the sheriff's office, and now they, two are becoming deputies. And that just, that just is a beautiful thing to me to see, that generation will carry through, staying in Franklin County rather than going off to larger counties where they have an opportunity, they're choosing to stay here, and I hope that trend continues. And I personally appreciate the board working with us to get those salaries up because I do believe that was instrumental in attaining these, these new hires. They're younger people, so hopefully they're going to have a career in law enforcement right here in Franklin County, and I'm excited about that. But do you have any questions regarding the two TDC positions? Erin just wanted me to come and give a brief update that we have filled those positions, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have.
I'm good with that, I didn't know, to be honest with you, if you were asking for action, what we were considering.
No, she just wanted me to come and update the board that we had filled those two TDC positions.
Mr. Chairman, you do have, obviously, I know with these, the funding from the TDC, it also provides for their equipment?
Correct.
And any kind of ATV, UTV device that they need?
Well, the ATVs, no, the, the TDC did not pay for that, they did purchase two trucks. We are making lease payments on one, Erin was able to pay one of those trucks off at the end of the fiscal year, so it pays for the trucks and equipment on the trucks and the two TDC positions. the two TDC positions. But ATVs and all of that, we pay for that. That is part of our, the leases that we entered into agreement with this past year with the banks. So that's on us, the ATVs.
Thanks for the clarification.
Sure thing.
And that's fantastic to know we've got some local people that's going to be a part of our sheriff's force, so that's great.
And, you know, it's great that we have other people from the outside coming in. That's exciting, too. They're making their homes here, but I just think it's a beautiful thing to see the people stay here in Franklin County, too, rather than go off, you know, make, make their homes and, and build a future here in Franklin County. It's fantastic.
Called tradition.
Yes, thank you. That's right.
I'm all about tradition.
Yes, ma'am. Me, too.
May I ask a question? This doesn't pertain to the TDC, but I just want to put a thought out there for, in recent weeks, I've heard about the illness of Sheriff's
Yes, ma'am.
Smith. And would you convey to him our prayers for him?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anything that we can do to help?
Absolutely. And I think that's the biggest thing, the prayers, the thoughts and the prayers, the outpouring of support from the community has been tremendous. Trying not to get emotional. He's, he's great to work for. He really is, and he puts everything into the community, and he's been very, very good to me personally, as a staff member, and to my staff. He does require a lot from his deputy sheriffs and corrections officers. I'm sure they'll be the first to tell you, he is a very demanding leader. He expects a lot from us, but he gives back to us as well, and he is the first one to serve. He is not just sitting behind a desk and just sitting there drawing a paycheck. He is a very hard-working sheriff, and I'm proud to serve under him, and I will be happy to give him that, that well wishes, Commissioner.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate that as a whole, as a staff, and I know he does, too.
It is. And it's like you said, I was listening to him the other day. Somebody screenshot of one of the things where he was talking to the public, letting the public know what was going on. And it's big for a sheriff to come out there and say, you know, I've got this and all. But he's got a chronic kidney illness.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not cancer.
Right.
You know? Where in my family, we've got a member of our family fighting cancer right now. We never have had cancer in our family, but we have now. So we're fighting for that. So along with us fighting for our family member, we're fighting for the family member at the sheriff's department.
And we all have battles that we face daily, and that's what the community that we live in is so beautiful and wonderful. We all support one another.
Yeah, yeah.
And Franklin County, we're resilient. We're resilient people.
And Ginger, thank you for all you do. You've always been
Thank you, ma'am.
bright and out there, and I am so glad that we were able to work out something for the law enforcement side of this county.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Ginger.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Y'all have a great day. Merry Christmas again.
Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
All right. So, Mr. Merle, what we do have coming up next is time sensor for 10:30.
So we can skip that, go to Mr. Patterson. He just popped on the screen.
Okay.
And then we probably take a break, and then squeeze, squeeze Erin in, or, you know, we'll decide which will go first.
All right. So there's critical shoreline. Commissioner, is that something you said you wanted to pull an item before we considered it?
Yes, sir. The 1632 Alligator Drive.
Okay. So since there's only two, we'll just take the two in order.
Okay.
That, that way, you know what I mean?
You heard that, Mr. Patterson?
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
Yeah, I'm ready. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First one we have is 1632 Alligator Drive. A consideration of request to construct a new 2,624-square-foot single-family dock consisting of 1,960 square feet over-surface water dock and 664 square feet of two covered boat lifts. Property is located on Alligator Point, Franklin County. Request submitted by Florida Land and Environmental Services for Chase McNeil.
Okay. All right. Commissioner?
I just want to let you know that I'm opposed to this, as I was the last one down in Alligator Point. That was the same way, and it's because it's into the shellfish harvesting area, and I'm concerned about it. And I, a member of the, there's a couple of members, I read the synopsis of our planning and zoning meeting, and I want to let you know that District 2's member, planning and zoning member voted against it, so therefore I'm going to make a motion that we oppose it.
Yes, we have a motion to deny from Commissioner Sanders.
Because of the reasons I stated.
I'll go ahead and second, but I have a couple of questions and comments.
We have a second from Commissioner Ward. Go ahead, Commissioner.
One is, and I agree with what Commissioner Sanders stated, and I know this is probably not for here, maybe this is something we can talk about in the future, but is, this is a 2,000-square-foot dock. I know areas are different in terms of the depth of the water and how far they have to go out, but we don't have anything in our code that limits the amount of square footage for docks, do we?
Actually, no.
No?
No.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Yeah, and the reason we don't is because just what you stated. According to the different licenses they have to get from the state and federal, that when they get to the end of the dock, there has to be a certain depth of water. And our county is not only low-lying in, in the way it's constructed in our actual livable area, but actually the shoreline is the same way. That's why on the outside, even on the Gulf Beach of St. George Island, there's some spots you can be a quarter mile off and you can stand up and it's waist-deep.
Right.
I mean, you know what I mean? It's just so...that's, that's the reason for some of that. I will say, Commissioner, you say it's, it's harvestable areas. Does anybody ever oyster in Alligator Harbor?
That's what's classified, it's classified as classified shellfish harvesting water, but that's where the clam aquacultures and the oyster harvesting and all that's going on.
Right.
Yeah.
But this isn't going into their territory, though. Their lease?
It's the same place that was that other one that we denied, because it was going into, into the waters. Am I right, Steve?
Yeah, I believe so. I know DEP approved it, but they, you know, they have different standards than we have as Franklin County. They, we have more concern of...
Mr. Charles, I'll let you know, the plant, Justin is available if, if needed.
No, that's fine. That was the only question I had. Cause, and it was only because she said harvestable shellfish area. You know what I mean? That's why I was wondering.
Mr. Chairman, I was in the same conundrum, so to speak, because, I mean, when I listened to the P&amp;Z meeting, it said it was an active oyster bar, and there's a difference between active and harvestable, when that was what was going to be my question.
Is it a coon bar?
Exactly. That was exactly what I was going with. But...
They also have value.
Well, they do, but, I mean, you don't have to have to worry about a consumption hazard with a coon bar, so to speak. But anyway, I was under the same question in my mind, anyway.
Mainly the, you know, we, we have the planning and zoning members on there that look at the individual thing, and the one that is for District 2, I, I look forward to his input, because it's pretty doggone smart on it. And when he voted no, that they were, he was outvoted, well, I'm going to have to do that. And if y'all outvote me, that's just it. But this is what I...
Well, I think it was your member and my member that both voted no.
Mm-hmm, well, then.
So, yep.
Yeah, so...
All right. Any other discussion before we vote? And we are voting to turn down this approval.
Is there anyone from Florida land that wants to speak on this matter?
I don't know.
The applicant's representative?
Is anyone from the applicant that wishes to speak, Mike?
Either the applicant or the representative.
Thank you, Attorney Schuler. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Available to speak on this? Don't see any hands raised. Mr. Chairman?
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a five-o vote. Please proceed, Mr. Patterson.
Next one is 287 Magnolia Bay Drive. A consideration of a request to build, construct a 1,222-square-foot single-family dock and an 858-square-foot riprap shoreline stabilization. Property is located in Franklin County and the Magnolia Bay subdivision. Request submitted by Florida Environmental and Land Services Agent for Jeffrey Crutchler.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions.
All right, go ahead.
I, I do realize that, I guess we're still awaiting an Army Corps permit on this?
We are.
Okay. And I know staff recommended approval, and I think the P&amp;Z approved it, but my problem is, again, like I've said before in the past, there's no structure on this property. There's no request for the boat lift, which we've had concern over, but on the application, it shows boat lift slash boat slips, one slash zero. Does that mean they want a lift, or are they just asking for a slip? Because it's kind of confusing if you look at the application itself of what the request is. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're voting on something that...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to distract. Justin, Justin raises his hand to answer your questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Steele.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there, there is actually a structure that was on the site, is currently under construction. It has not received a CO at this point in time. There is...I think that would answer your, your question on that one.
Okay.
That was a mistake, because it had not received a CO when I reviewed the application.
Okay, because when I looked at the picture, and I know you can't really go by the, the pictures that's provided, it didn't look like there was a structure, but there is. So I don't have any issue with that. But I think moving forward, and I think I've mentioned this in the past with the permits, I think it'd be best if we had the lift slash slip separated out, to where we know what's being requested. I know it's slashed here, but it's kind of hard, like I said, to determine what they were requesting, whether it was a slip or a lift. But if, with those questions answered, I don't have a problem with, with making a motion to approve this.
Commissioner Ward, I just wanted to say we are working on that. We're going to have it to where it is, where we're going to designate where there's a lift versus a slip.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? Under discussion, Mr. Steele, I want to ask you a question. I know I'm putting you on the spot, because I have not talked to you ahead of time. You referenced in the meeting the other day, Florida Statute 125 dot 022, paragraph 5. Could you share with the board what that does in relation to federal and state permits and docks with Franklin County?
Yes, sir. So that section of Florida statute limits a county's ability to hold up a permit prior to an applicant receiving a local, excuse me, a federal permit, a state or federal permit. So even if you make a decision on the local level, it is upon the applicant's responsibility to make sure that they receive any state or federal permits, and that when considering an application, the local government should not consider whether or not they have already received approval from the state or federal government.
Mr. Chairman, do I need to amend my motion?
No, he motioned to approve.
Okay. Well, I was just didn't know if we need to do contingent on permits, because I think we're still awaiting an ACOE permit.
Well, that, that's, that's what he was explaining. We can't, I don't think we can in a legal stance require an applicant to have a state or federal permit before we decide to approve something. Isn't that correct?
Yes and no. I mean, the, the rule that Mr. Steele just announced has been the case, oh my goodness, 12, 15 years now. It's a longstanding rule. Typically, the board would approve the local application and also make it contingent on getting the federal and state permits, just so it's clear to staff that
Right.
we've cleared all the local hurdles.
Right.
But they still, if they have to have a state or federal permit, they still have to have that.
Right, right, right. Oh, we can't exempt them from that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We just can't hold this up and say, well, we won't take any...because what had happened before the legislature passed that statute, this local government, other local governments would routinely just
Deny.
deny or table until those state and federal permits came in. So the whole purpose of the legislation is to streamline the permitting and construction. Because typically, our local processes, I mean, it's a month or two, and people think that takes a long time until they go get a law court or court permit?
Yeah.
DEP permit in there. I just talked to someone earlier this week. They've been working with a year trying to get some action out of DEP on, on a certain matter. So that, that's the reason for the, the statute, and it's perfectly okay to make the local approval contingent upon the receipt of any necessary state and federal permits.
Commissioner Ward, was that your motion contingent upon?
Yes.
Okay, then that is fine. All right. Any other discussion before we vote?
I have, I have something. Magnolia Bay is a subdivision.
Yes.
Over there off of North Faisel. Yeah. I know they have a community dock there. By them having that community dock there, do they have any other docks within that subdivision?
I think there's a couple.
Other than that community dock?
No, I think there's a couple. So there's one that's a common area that's shared by everybody, because everybody doesn't have waterfront property, but I, I think this will now be the third dock that an individual that has water access is asking.
Yeah, I would just want to make sure that we're consistent on what we did.
Yeah, I don't think they're like summer camp, Commissioner Sanders. That may be what you're thinking about, where they've got the restrictions on individual docks.
I want to make sure they didn't have restrictions.
Yeah, no, their HOA doesn't have that restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, without looking, I don't know, but I know that's what you're thinking about.
You know that's where I'm going, Dave.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Mr. Steele?
All right. We have a sketch plate approval for the Seashire subdivision. It's a consideration of a request to create a new residential subdivision in two phases. Phase one would see the construction of seven one-acre lots. Property is located at 100 Gilbert Street, East Point, Florida. Request submitted by Joshua Parker, applicant and property owner.
So the, the quester is here in the room, Commissioners, if y'all have any questions for him.
Now, this is the same one that kind of made a presentation with it little igloo looking.
It did, and at the time, he was considering asking for a PUD, but now he's asking to use his property in the way it's already zoned.
And are they gonna, are these little, because you, I'm asking you, because you're the commissioner, you'll have the information.
Yes.
I don't want to put Steve on the spot if you don't know, but is it going to make the square, I know it. Is it going to make the square footage?
As far as I know, for the properties.
And it's going to be for the lower income, is where they can afford it?
I believe that's true. Mr. Parker, you want to?
Yeah.
Just in case. I don't, I don't want to speak for you, sir, not when you're in the room. Sorry.
I just want to add to that. Are you going to make it affordable?
Well, as, as much as we can, we're, we're doing, you know, less units, because we're going to be giving one acre to each unit. So, you know, being that we haven't gotten to the permitting through the, you know, the environmental protection things and the road construction, we're going to do the best we can, right?
So you're gonna, you're gonna have 14 altogether with the two phases? You'll have 14 of them all together?
No, there's, there's seven in the first, and then there's 21 in the second phase.
Okay. You're going to do the seven to see how it goes, and then you'll know?
Exactly, yeah. Yep. See, see how, see how it all flies. Yep.
That's where it goes.
And, and the good part about that is the seven unit pieces closer to the road, so it's further to get back to the other ones, so that...
That answers my question.
And Josh, are you still intending to make the same kind of construction?
Yeah, exa- exactly. Yeah, the ARPC thing that I had discussed last time we all met together.
I call them igloos.
Yeah, that's, that's come a long way. So we actually had a presentation, the ARPC in the last couple of months, the Regional Plan Council, with a company that actually did a similar to ARPC, but not quite ARPC, but they did a concrete home that was printed on a 3D printer.
Yeah.
And I was like, okay, this is different. You know, and it was in Tallahassee, and somebody's actually living in it.
I've actually seen videos on that, how it actually works. It's very cool.
Yeah. So there's a lot happening with concrete.
Yeah, I don't know if you all saw, there's, there's one going up in Pensacola right now, which is pretty interesting as well. They're using an inflatable bladder and then doing something on top of it. I'm not exactly sure what the model is with that, but it was, it's been in the news for the last couple of weeks.
There's one down in Alligator Point, right next to the fire station down there. There's one down there.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a, I know there was some question about meeting the depth lock requirement, but if you've met all the other requirements, the depth, I think, is kind of goes hand in hand on it. So...
Yeah, it does.
And when you came and presented at the, a meeting in the past about your, your plan, I thought it was a pretty cool idea. I think this is a good idea. And, and the QuikCrete, I know you're just looking, asking right now just to be able to, to make the lots, but I think the QuikCrete is a lot more cheaper than your typical stick-built home anyway. Probably a lot more fir, more stabilized, you know, in a storm, too, a lot more stronger.
These, this, this technology has the potential to really be a game changer for the, for the state of Florida or any coastal community that, that has storms. They're, yeah, they should be very robust in that capacity. So it'll be, hopefully, we never get to test it, right?
Hopefully, hopefully.
But, but hopefully, there'll, there'll be, there'll be something that'll, you know, be a spotlight for maybe other communities in the, in the state as well.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Parker? All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. It's a five-o vote. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Hey, thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Alright, is Ms. Griffith going to attend by saying?
Steve, I have a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not, not action items, just information update.
Well, you got to give a guy a heads up. Go ahead, Mr. Steele.
Hi. I just want to let you know that I have hired Chester Reese. He's a local contractor out of Carabel to be a, he's going to be with us part-time, starting January sixth, as a building inspector.
Good.
We will allow us the, allow me the freedom to do a little more of the administrative parts of my job.
Yeah, good.
So we look forward to it. He's a nice guy. I think most of y'all probably know him and he is, you know, I think he's going to fit in good with the county.
Good.
The other item I have is when we bought this building over in East Point, the plan was always to close in the drive-through area to make it a multipurpose room. So a room that we could use for training, contractor, continuing education, when we need to have a public meeting on flood review and stuff, when, you know, when Angela can explain flood policies to people and when FEMA wants to come in. So just a room out there, so closing that in. And so sometime after the first of the year, we'd like to start looking into what we have to do to get that accomplished. So Mr. Morong will be in, keep you in the loop on what we're going to do with that.
And we'll be able to use building, building department funds to do that with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sounds good. What else, sir?
That's all I've got.
Well, I'm working off no list, so I don't want to cut you off twice. Good, Steve, that sounds good. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me recommend a quick break. We come back with Aaron and then by the time we get to where Aaron, we can get hit that, the, clear gov or open gov?
Alright, let's take a five-minute recess.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Up next, Ms. Erin Griffith, our Fiscal Manager and Grants Coordinator. Go ahead, Ms. Erin.
Erin, you're muted.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
She did it again, hold on.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good morning Commissioners, sorry about that. We're having some connectivity issues over here this morning.
All right, go ahead.
But the first action item on my... Oh.
You're good, go ahead.
Oh, okay. The first item on my report is simply for information. And typically, I will put information items at the end of my report. However, a lot of this stuff was kind of relative to each other and then flowed right into the next topic. So it's a little mixed up today. But I did want to mention the FDOT's five-year work plan funding announcements. And Franklin County has received notification that we will be awarded the following road projects as part of the FDOT Tenet Work Plan. We feel the hard work of the TAC Committee and ARPC helped move some of these projects forward as they brought attention to conditions and needed safety improvements countywide via their ranking list, which you all received a copy of. CR 30A, west of Appalachia Cola, the Phase Three widening and resurfacing of approximately 1.794 miles east of 11 Mile Road to SR 30, Highway 98, slated for construction funding in state fiscal year 2027. Construction cost estimate of 4.124 million. Also Gulf Beach Drive on St. George Island, the widening and resurfacing of 6.09 miles from 12th Street West at the entrance of the St. George Island Plantation to the St. George Island State Park. That's slated for design funding in state fiscal year 2028, an estimated cost of 635,000. And then also Phase One for widening and resurfacing of the 1.642 miles from 7th Street West to 6th Street East on St. George Island, slated for construction funding in state fiscal year 2029 at the cost of 2.993 million. Also Patent Drive in East Point from US 98 to SR 300 Island Drive, resurfacing of .73 miles of roadway slated for construction funding in state fiscal year 2026. Construction cost estimate 655,000. CR 370 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, construction of the fire station cutoff road slated for construction in state fiscal year 2027, an estimated construction cost of 496,000. CR 370 Alligator Drive, Alligator Point, adding six-foot of paved shoulders added as the extension of the multi-use path from the Marina to the S curve boat ramp, which was previously the unfunded Phase Four section of the Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path Project. It was unveiled as a road project, as there is not enough right-of-way in the area for a fully separated path. Design will occur in state fiscal year 2026, construction in 2029. And with those items being for informational, it will run right into our next action item, which is the FDOT Transportation Alternative Grant Applications and Rankings. The Transportation Alternative Program is now open for funding applications. The TA program constructs new sidewalks and multi-use paths. The Transportation Alternatives Program was actually the application that was submitted for the Phase Four Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path, the basically the extension of the shoulders of the roads. That was actually a TA project. These projects are competitively scored and awarded based upon the limited amount of funds available for a district. Franklin County is eligible to apply for two projects under this program, and the deadline for the TA applications is January 17, 2025. The county may want to consider reapplying for a shorter section of the River Road Path in Carabelle and design for the extension of the multi-use path along North Bay Shore Drive in East Point, Section North to Twin Lakes Road. The last funding cycle, there was approximately $2 million available in TA funds available for all of District Three, which is comprised of 16 counties, including Leon, Wacola, Gulf, and Jefferson, just to name a few of those counties. Board action to authorize the development of the applications for the path sections above, with ranking and project scope to be refined after discussion with project engineers and FDOT.
So move.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Say.
Second from two, Commissioner Amos and Commissioner Kroom. Any discussion, Commissioners?
I've got just two statements.
Yes.
And this is on... Now, we're doing one and two, or what?
Well, two's where we're at right now.
Yeah, two's where you're at right now. But I got a couple of things on the one that I waited for her to go through because she went ahead and went to number two. But I just, two statements I want to make. As I brought up before in the past, a couple of meetings, where she's talking about the fire station cutoff road. It is washing out there. If we have another storm, we're going to have a problem on that part of the road. So just making the board aware of that. And then on the Alligator Drive section in Helene, stuff happened down between the S curve and Marina that washed out part of the road all the way down. About, I'd say, looked like maybe 500,000 yards, something like that. About 500, I'd say. And all the pavement's gone, so the road department put lime rock out there. We're going to have to do something there. We're not going to be able to wait until 2029, you know? So I just want to make y'all aware of what's going on, on that. That's what I have.
Ms. Erin, on those two things that the Commissioner's bringing up, did we apply for any FEMA funding for those repairs relative to destruction from the storms?
Yes, they are in the project queue. Unfortunately, FEMA moves forward, you know, very slowly on repair projects. So, you know, hopefully that will occur, you know, long before the actual path construction will begin.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion before we vote?
Got one quick question.
Yes.
Now, that C 30A, west of Appalachia, that is coming back to the Y, correct? Where they had...
That's correct.
Okay. All right, just trying to get it straight. And this is what Commissioner Sanders and Mr. Berry, this is the part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Erin, on that, when they start to do that, I don't know what they can do to improve that access to that Y back to 98. I know we asked them to change the way they did the stop sign several years back. I don't think it helped actually improve or make the road safer. The issue is, when dump trucks or anybody bigger's coming down that road to 98 and they come to a full stop, if they can look and not see anybody on that curve, but by the time they get out in the road, somebody's coming around that curve. So I don't know what they can do, design different, but they might want to look at it as they get closer to that project to make sure it's safer. Because it's the current...
Okay.
The current access to 98 is too far in the curve to see around the curve. You know, they're not able to see if anybody's coming. So I don't know what can be changed, but...
Okay.
Needs to be looked at.
But just for discussion's sake, you know, for years, that was a yield.
Yes, it was.
That yielded right away. But, and I agree with you. Personally looking at it, I don't know outside of signage on the, I guess it would be eastbound side of that.
Yeah.
I don't know what the fix will be, because that is a very tight curve and the speed limit's 60 mile an hour.
Well, signage, you either reduce the speed limit before you get to it. One or two's got to happen.
There'd have to be some type of reduction or something.
Yeah, one, two's got to happen, because it's not good.
No, it's not. I agree with you 100%. But I do believe going from a yield to a stop was a better decision than what we had there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Ms. Erin, one question about what, actual discussion on what we're voting on. I'm sorry. I'll try to do better. Is, I know there's going to be a recommendation coming back to us with ranking. Does it really matter...
Correct.
For the sake of grants, whether a project's ranked by us number one, number two, or number three? Does that factor into anything?
Actually, Commissioner, Transportation Alternatives is actually one of the only ones that actually require a ranking. I don't really know why they do that. I guess probably because there's such a limited amount of funds. You know, when you think about, you know, last year, for example, they had $2 million for 16 counties.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of, I don't know, one reason why I think that they want you to rank them.
Okay.
You know, and that's also one reason for breaking the projects up into smaller components is just because it will actually increase the likelihood of them actually funding it, such as, you know, maybe just requesting funding for design at some point for District Three. There's also the Small County Road Assistance Program, or SCRAP, for use on the county road system, and are evaluated on the physical condition of the road, whether the road is used as an evacuation route, whether the road has high levels of agricultural traffic, whether the road is a major arterial route or a feeder road, whether the road is located in a fiscally constrained county, and the impact of the project on the state or local economy. The county is eligible to submit two applications for this program. Last funding cycle, there was approximately $9 million in SCRAP funds available for District Three. And the County Incentive Grant Program, or SIGP, is for use on the state or county road system. If it's on the county road system, it must relieve traffic congestion on the state road system. The county is eligible to submit one application. And last funding cycle, there was approximately $2.8 million available in SIGP funds available for District Three. Some project ideas may include resubmitting the application to widen and resurface CR 370 Alligator Drive, south from Highway 98, and some areas of Lighthouse Road or Frank McCamey Road in Carabelle. I would ask for Commissioners to please call or email with any project ideas or concepts by the end of the month to allow time for review and preparation of grant applications for formal approval before the program deadlines. And I'll take a break here in case you guys want to say anything or if you want me to roll on to action, Board Information Item Number Four.
Mr. Chairman, I just got something real quick. I agree with you, Erin, but I also want to, and I'll get with you, of course, after this. I have several ideas for my district with these programs.
Okay.
One of them probably is going to be Ryan Drive as well, because to get some of the roads paved in my district, we can utilize some of these grants, because a lot of roads in my district, as well as some of these other Commissioners, are evacuation routes or could be considered as evacuation routes. And now that Ryan Drive is considered a no-truck route and they're using Lake Morality, I've gotten complaints about truckers trying to get on Lake Morality Road because it's not wide enough and it's got a little hill trying to access County Route 67. So those are just ideas that I have. I don't know if Commissioner Sanders wants to elaborate on that, but I'll get with you after the meeting at some point, whether it be today or tomorrow, to talk about it.
Okay, sounds great.
Anyone else?
Well, I had the same ideas, because now that they have identified Lake Morality as a truck route, we need to have the shoulders widened and all that. So that's what I was going to ask, if we could submit that, because that's something that's needed, because it goes, it takes, alleviates that traffic off of 98 and puts it down there. And it was made many years ago, and around the 2008, prior to that, for the prison that was coming out there before, you know, when the prison was built. So it's been long enough that we can do a road paving project on it.
Problem is, Mr. Chairman, is you've got limited funds for 13 counties. So that's what's frustrating, too, is how much, if Franklin County gets some, how much? And what do we do with that versus having to compete with other? I think, I mean, I appreciate the government, federal government, coming with these grants, state government, but it's, they need to change the way they do it, because 20 million for the SCRAP is not a lot in the grand scheme of things when you're trying to divvy it up between 13 counties, one of which is Leon. I don't know, those are just my thoughts. I know that's not Erin's fault or anybody's fault. I just figured I'd bring that up.
And Commissioners, not to make it worse, but keep in mind what I talked to you about last meeting, that there's a possibility the Speaker of the House, because I read it in a news story, he is bound and determined to reduce the budget. And I hate, Commissioner Sanders, she said it right away. She said, this is where they go to first, and then the ship fund is second, you know? So there, there's an order, a pecking order of things they look to kind of reduce to when they do budget cuts. So we got to keep the pressure on through FAC in any way we can.
Well, we'll fight and we'll fight.
And with our legislators.
We'll fight the best we can to keep them, so anyway.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Because, you know, SCRAP started out at, you know, and it was awful. It was awful. We couldn't apply for nothing. I'm so proud, so proud that Franklin County qualifies for every program that the Florida DOT puts out. That makes me proud, right there.
All right. Yeah. Anyone else before we go into the next one?
Mr. Chairman, did you want to pause on Erin and go to the...
Oh, yes, it is 10:30, yes. Yeah, Ms. Erin, we'll come back to number four.
Okay, okay, sounds good, Commissioner.
The ClearGov thing was, we set a time for it, so.
Okay.
And Nathaniel is online right now. And there he is.
Hello.
Hey, sir.
Hi, how's everyone doing today?
Doing well, how you doing?
Doing well over here. Can everyone hear me okay on your end?
Yes, sir, it's just fine, go ahead.
Perfect. Well, I just want to start off today by saying thank you so much. I appreciate the time, giving me time to be able to present before you, U.S. Commissioners here this morning. My name's Nathaniel Pacina. I'm a Solutions Advisor here at ClearGov. Actually come from county government myself in my past life, was a part of the Budget and Finance Team at Ellis County, Texas for several years. It's a little bit of ways from you, but we are really looking at ways to increase budget efficiency and really promote transparency throughout our county. When I ran into ClearGov, liked it so much, ended up joining the team here. So now I have the opportunity and privilege to work with Commissioners all across the state, as well as the U.S. here. But what I really wanted to do is just spend the next 10 minutes just highlighting what it is that ClearGov does, why do we exist, our partnership with FAC. And then from that standpoint, I love just to highlight the various solutions that we're working with county governments on, what we're doing with them. And then I have some examples that I'd like to show you here this morning, potential ways we can assist the county here. But then, at the end of the presentation, I always like to leave room to address any questions that you might have. But does that sound like a fair plan for today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to try to share my screen here. Did that work on your end?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Well, really coming from a background in county government myself and having the opportunity to speak with Erin and really learn about the budget process here at the county, from what I've learned is that a lot of the work that goes into building the annual budget, it's very similar to what I'm hearing across the state, right? Your team is tasked with putting together the various aspects of the budget and then ultimately, right, being able to collaborate internally, gather requests, and then provide you with the best output as Commissioners to really make the most informed business decisions for your community. And while this process is working, what I'm hearing time and time again is that it can be a little cumbersome, a little tedious throughout the way as local governments work with tools like Excel, trying to send emails back and forth, trying to gather this information. But then even more than that, right, being tasked with sharing it with the public, right? Really being able to display everything that the county's accomplishing by posting the budget on the website. It can just be a tall task for a lot of communities who maybe don't have the largest teams, right? Or you're really just trying to do the best with what you have. And that's really where ClearGov comes in and folks have turned to us and said, okay, while my process is working, modernization is a huge must for us. And our mission here at ClearGov, we're all about creating easy-to-use software to help governments budget and even plan better. ClearGov, we work with local governments all across the U.S. here. We are a U.S.-based company. So much so that we've been winning awards year over year for working with local communities that we serve. And a big reason for that is because a lot of us that work here at ClearGov come from local government, right? Myself included, I come from county government. So essentially, what we're doing is we're building tools and resources for county governments in ways that we wish we had when we were working in local government. And we've been doing it for some time that we're actually endorsed by the National Association of Counties as being a go-to budget resource for county governments such as yourself. And then I'm very proud to promote our partnership with FAC as we're now Official Business Solutions Partners, as it happened earlier this year as well. But just to give you a highlight of who we work with, a little bit more locally, we work with 60-plus communities here in the state of Florida alone. A name you might recognize, Bay County there. Worked with several counties, Palm Beach County, Sumter, St. John's. But what we do is we actually work as a complement to your existing financial system that you have now. But what we do at ClearGov is, where today, a lot of communities are really working to build out formulas, track that in Excel, pull together the information, collaborate internally, and even share that information with you as Commissioners, right? We want to assist along the way and have a one-stop shop for the team to be able to come in, build out the various aspects of the budget. But then also, a huge component to this is being able to, once the budget is presented and, or once the budget is built out and you've really finalized that, we want to empower the team in the county to be able to promote that to the public, right? Bring all of your residents along for the journey to really see what the county's accomplishing over time. Just a little bit, I've been on this meeting. I was listening in on the various projects that you're working on and working to promote. And it's items like that where ClearGov comes alongside. And we want you to be able to share that information without having to put more work in as a staff, as a team, and that they're not having to build anything else kind of special for the Commission, but we want our tools to assist along the way. And what I mean by that, just to kind of break down the different tools that we're working with county governments on, as I mentioned, we have tools to help with the building of the budget, but also increase transparency in that presentation of the budget. So we have a tool like the Operating Budgeting Solution to where your team, someone like Erin, can actually come in, build out the budget, be able to track that historically, be able to provide the budget to departments in an effective way. And then you, as a Commission, you can actually come in and have reviewer access to see, hey, these are where all the dollars are allocated towards, right? This has been the trend historically. This is where we're going as a county, and be able to have immediate access to make those informed business decisions, as well as even being able to build out those best-case, worst-case scenarios for personnel, for positions, empowering Erin to really save time and pulling together the best-case budget for the county, be able to evaluate that information effectively, even down to the capital projects or maybe road improvement projects that you're working on, be able to really priority rank these as well, evaluate all this information, and have a one-stop dashboard to where you can access this and be able to say, hey, these are the projects that we're working on. This is where we're at with this project. This is how much is allocated. And then ultimately, being able to bring the public along, right? We have those public-facing tools to where, once the county's built out the budget, just like you're used to doing today, our tools are going to actually pull that information and automate charts, graphs, line item detail, to where there's going to be one place where your everyday resident, who maybe doesn't understand all the detail level of an Excel spreadsheet, right? They can just come in and access, hey, this is what my county's doing historically. This is where we're going as a county. Being able to access a nice transparency page where they can see, okay, these are the revenues, the expenditures of the county. This is what we've been completing over time. And then ultimately, you, as a county, be able to showcase, hey, these are our initiatives. This is how much budget is allocated for all of our initiatives, and this is how we're progressing and on track to do so. But I'm just going to show you a quick example of what some communities are doing. This right here, this is St. John's County. They actually just published this a couple days ago, as you can see. But what their team did is they actually just built out the budget as they typically would. But then ClearGov, our tool, we came alongside them and we started building out this additional information. So any interactive charts or graphs, even down to this line item detail, is all automated for them and their team out of the box, just as a go-to point for the public residents to be able to come in, evaluate the budget, see the breakdown, whether it be by fund, whether it be at the department level, see what everyone's accomplishing, even down to the county plans, right? As a resident, I can come into St. John's County, to their portal, and I can see, okay, this is their one-year plan. This is the cost that's being allocated for this specific year. And then the tool itself is going to break down all the information. So I'm able to evaluate, okay, this is what my county's doing. This is where my dollars are going, even down to the request or the project itself and say, okay, looks like there's a jail parking kind of expansion that's happening. What's the detail behind that? What is that cost total? What does that look like over time? And then ultimately, here's another community. You're able to break down key focus areas of what you're working on as a county and really be able to share this information where the public can say, okay, it looks like this is what my county is really prioritizing in the upcoming years. I can see how they're progressing and really accomplishing these portions of their plan, as well as be able to break down, hey, these are the dollars that are going towards these various aspects, towards these various projects. And then they can even come along for the ride and say, okay, this is how they've progressed over time. It looks like we're completing a lot over this past year, especially as relates to specific aspects like financial sustainability. We're well on track, we're 36% complete as well. And then ultimately, have a one-stop shop transparency place for your community to where they can come into your county and say, okay, this is where we're at as a community. This is how we compare what the sales tax revenues look like, whatever that might be, whatever information you want to display, and even break down those financials of revenues, expenditures, various projects you're working on, even down to the project location and timeline, things of that nature. But really, this is what I had to show for today as it relates to ClearGov and how we can assist in coming alongside, equipping Erin and the team with tools to increase the creation, the efficiency in that creation of the budget, provides you as a Commission with the information you need to make those informed business decisions. And then ultimately, how are you able to bring the public along and really promote transparency and really showcase, hey, this is what we're accomplishing as a county. This is what we've been completing over time as well. But I just want to pause right here and absolutely leave room for any questions that you might have that I can address.
Questions, Commissioners? Anyone have any questions? I have a couple for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So i- i- in the solution that we're looking at as a county, it's not the entire suite, but it's, I think, three or four of them. It's personnel, budgeting, operational budgeting, and the digital budget book. Does it also include the transparency feature you've highlighted a couple of times?
Yes, sir. You'll be able to access, similar to St. John's County, that budget information, where it breaks down their funds, their departments, you can showcase what you're doing as a county. You will have that included. And then there's also additional transparency initiatives that, that you're always welcome to add on as well as, as you go through it. But um, to start, you'll have this transparency portion where you can really showcase what you're doing throughout the budget.
And uh, yeah, so thank you for that. The uh, the reason commissioners, we're having this presentation today is this is something that staff really supports doing. It's gonna make what Ms. Aaron and, and Ms. Kim are trying to do on our behalf, not only make it more transformative in the process, but you're also gonna also, as we've been doing as a board, take a big leap forward in being, having all our information out there, it's completely transparent for those that want to know. We don't have anything to hide, we're trying to conduct the people's business on the people's behalf. I will say that it's uh, it does have other features that, and I asked him the other day when I was meeting with him, myself and Ms. Aaron and Mr. Morong, that wouldn't cost that much more, but we're just not there as a county, we need to start where we need to start at. But it does have a feature that will allow us in the future to actually publish and come up with a strategic plan for the county. So the residents can know what's coming, just like the DOT plan, what's coming one years, three years, five years down the road, and what we're looking at trying to fund on behalf of the residents. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew that. One question I have for you, Nathaniel. So, once we upload all this, and, and you guys do the onboarding as well, correct?
Absolutely, my team will do all the onboarding, so that way Aaron doesn't have to, to work on that.
Onboarding training, that's included in the prize, working with staff. Once the data gets uploaded and we're live, who owns the data?
Yeah, so as far as where is your data kind of sitting or?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so um, so as far as the data goes, y'all are in complete control of your data. So as far as versions, when that gets updated, anything like that, that's up to, to your team, whoever's the designated person, to be able to provide those, those financial updates. And then from a ClearGov perspective, we are cloud-based, so we're not hosting anything like on-premise. But everything is through AWS cloud servers, through these intricate, an intricate level of, of data securities that my team's built up.
All right, I just didn't think to ask you that the other day when we met, but uh,
Yeah, no, great question.
Question.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. One of them was answered already, which is being transparent, usable to the public.
Yes.
That was one of them, and you kind of touched on it, was the onboarding and training. Would that be in person or, or via Zoom or, or onboarding?
Yes, Commissioner, just to be sure, I heard you correctly, you asked about training and onboarding, was that correct?
Yes.
Yes, um, yeah, so the way it works is we do, we typically do our training through Zoom. What's nice with ClearGov is we built our tools to be very user-friendly for just any department. So what we actually do at ClearGov is for any department itself, not just finance or anything, we'll offer training and support, just because our tools are very collaborative, right? We want your whole team to be brought along for the journey as well. So anytime, let's say Aaron's like, hey, we want to show this department how they can be utilizing ClearGov a little bit more efficiently, right? To be able to see their budget, see what they're doing. We can always schedule a call just like this today, we'll hop on, walk through the team with that. And we're never gonna charge for any additional training or support just because, again, this, our tools are very collaborative, and we want to bring the whole team along for that journey.
Okay.
Does that answer, does that answer your question?
I wanted to make sure because, you know, it is, it is a new product, new system, and, you know, we've been doing it a different way for a long time. So I just want to make sure that our staff have, you all be accessible to our, our staff.
Absolutely.
After the fact.
Absolutely.
Is, is the, is the onboarding done in person or is it also kind of digital and over the phone?
Yeah, so what's nice for the onboarding is that we actually just need a report from your financial system of your chart of accounts. And then my team will do all the mapping remotely as well. And then we actually just coordinate a call just like this with, who I would presume would be Aaron, who just understands the, the chart of account structure. And we'd be sure that she's good with it, she likes the way it looks, and then we can also schedule those additional trainings as well. But yeah, my, my, my team, the data mapping team, they do everything remotely as well. And all we need from, from your end is just a report from Aaron, and then we can start that process. So that way Aaron's not having to go in and reconfigure anything herself. I would never want for that to happen because Aaron has 150 other things that she can probably be doing.
Anyone else have any questions?
So it, last question, and it's, it's still on the same, same area right here. So if, I guess in case something happens, would you all be available for in-person?
Yeah, if, if something were to happen, we do have folks there, boots on the ground in Florida, happy to assist with that, with whatever might be necessary. In fact, I was supposed to have one of my team members there today, which I apologize, they're actually wanna, they want to go down here on a, here on another date if we were to form a partnership and really just kind of celebrate that. But um, yeah, we, we do have folks that are there, boots on the ground in Florida, even from our data mapping team. So if you guys ever need any assistance, we can absolutely make ourselves available.
All right, that's what I needed to know, because, you know, some people are just kinesthetic learners like myself.
So commissioners, if I may, so we, we understand this is moving from the old way of doing the budget, the paper way, you know, the budget books, you know, the spreadsheets and all that. It's more instant, and sometimes, you know, in the past, if we changed the budget a percent, Aaron had to pause, recalculate, and bring it back to you. This, this avoids all of that. It also encourages, at some point, Nathaniel is saying, we're gonna teach other departments how to upload their own information. Again, makes it easier and instant with the changes, and that information is available to everyone. So this is where, in another, I know Commissioner Amerson talked about AI for, for grant writing. This is kind of along the same lines of progressing your, your, your budget process, you know? Less old-school, less paper, you know, less spreadsheets, more instant, more services. How, how do you do SAS, you know, on the cloud type basically service, you know? Kind of like the agenda, you know, I just, I, I just, I was looking at the email, I saw Aaron had updated her report while you guys were talking. I went back there, updated her reports, and now if you refresh, her new report is now on the cloud. Same, same process with the budget, which, no more budget books, no more scanning, a million pages, you know, none of that anymore. So this is where the board has asked staff to, to, to go to, you know? More stuff online, more stuff available to the public.
And Mr. Chairman, as Nathaniel stated, Aaron has, and Kim both have a lot on their plate. And I know poor Aaron probably pulls her hair out every year, she has to deal with the budget. So this is just a way to help her, to augment her, her, the work that she puts into these things, so.
Okay, if you can hire a few more employees, buy software.
Mr. Chairman, that brings me to my question is, what, uh, security? Have you all had a security assessment? I mean, is this, what kind of preventative measures do y'all have in place as far as hacks or stuff like that? I mean, obviously, if we're gonna get cyber with it, we gotta make sure we, we have that sense of security anyway, but.
Yes, absolutely, that, that's a great question. So we've actually never had any type of data breach to date, and that's because our, our multi-site data servers that we utilize through AWS, that SOC 2 compliance through there, ClearGov, that's where everything's hosted. There are multi-site facilities through AWS, which are the same servers as the FBI at the federal level. So that's where the data gets hosted itself. And that's really the reason why we kind of took the off-premise approach, because what a lot of times these, these attacks will do is if, if it is on-premise as well, they'll attack that one site when it is on-premise and then lock down all your data. But that's, that's not how this works in, in the sense of ClearGov.
Yeah, commissioners, and as well, it also actually, it basically takes our financial system information and actually inputs into theirs. And with the county budget process, everything is public information anyway. You know, so basically, you know, all of the budget books and such, you know, all of that information is basically, we are providing them, we're not giving them anything that would be construed as private information. So I feel comfortable in that aspect as well. You know, granted that will be, there will be, you know, our position names, and there'll also be the benefit rates tied to it as well. But you know, there, there won't be, all the eggs won't be in one basket per se. This is basically the public interface, and we'll also assist in, you know, for example, when I go through and I actually update, you know, every single department, I'm entering their expenditure history for the, the five-year history, I won't have to do that anymore. Where basically, what Nathaniel will do is he will actually port it from our financial system. He'll actually do all, get all of that data entered for us. There will be one place there where I will actually do almost like the, the master setup as far as for all of the department budgets, where there is a, a rate for senior management service class retirement. There's a rate for regular class, there's the health, life, and dental insurance rates. You know, I will actually have a, a default area where I can enter it once, instead of having to enter it, you know, 20 different times on 20 different spreadsheets. So hopefully it should speed things up that way. And it will also be a little easier for the public to use as well, and I, I believe easier for the public too, to see expenditure history and trends and that type of things.
I guess my last question is, have we got a price tag yet, or?
Yes, it's in Aaron's report.
Yep, Aaron's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's in Aaron's report.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Nathaniel actually cover that a little bit, and then I can actually do the action item from my report after he's, he's finished, because there was a, a price break by us actually approving this before January 1st because it's going to be prorated for the first year. But I'll let Nathaniel tell you all, all about that, because, you know, of course, the, the software is, is rather expensive, but it does have a lot of bills and whistles, and I feel like the public will see the value in it.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, 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 absolutely. So what we went ahead and did for the county is a couple of things. And the reason why we're really promoting it even today is we're, we're keeping the county on the 2024 rates. We do have the annual rate increase at ClearGov. But then what we also did is, to Aaron's point, is we're prorating this first initial year, just to get the county's foot in the door, kind of test the waters. I did let Aaron know as well that if this is something that the county decides, hey, this isn't what we thought, or maybe we want to adjust anything, the way we work at ClearGov is we're never gonna force you to work with us. So this is, this is to be evaluated annually. And then what we also did is we actually took away those, any setup costs, any of those training costs that we were discussing, ClearGov is absorbing that. And that's, that's primarily just due to just good faith and our partnership with the FAC, and I know your involvement in that as well. So that's what we went ahead and absorbed on our side.
Sounds good, what kind of numbers are we talking about, sir?
Yes, so for January 1st start, the nine-month prorata, and this is with a 100% waived setup fee, it'd be the subscription of $19,968, and then 75 cents. And then October 1st, 2025, which is that next fiscal year, that's when you're gonna go to your 12-month annual subscription fee of $26,625.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Aaron, while he's here, did you want to finish the presentation? And then do you handle your items on your report? How did you want, I didn't ask ahead of time, how did you want to proceed?
Oh, oh, yes, actually, if we could, commissioners, I'd like to do action item number 12. If you all are so inclined, you know, this, this is entirely, you know, up to the board, but board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached service order for the first-year budget software subscription. And this is actually subject to appropriation, so if, you know, by chance, that the, the board would actually go with this software service, basically if departments or the public doesn't see the value in it, it is subject to appropriation each year. So there's, you know, no cancellation fee either.
All right, and Ms. Aaron, there also was a letter in our packet from ClearGov. They're pretty much a sole-source solution, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that, clarify that for the record. Commissioners, do you have any more questions, or are you ready to, to take action on this topic?
Commissioner, I just want to ensure if we do approve this today, that Attorney Schuler's gonna approve or, or look at any contract or anything like that.
Sure. So is that a motion to approve, or?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so your motion is contingent upon Attorney Schuler's review?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, a question.
All right, so we do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Did you have some, sir?
I was just curious, did it have like an annual percentage increase or anything like that, or is this?
Is, is there a standard percentage annual, this is the question was asked. So annually, is there a standard percentage you increase every year, or how does that look?
Yes, great question. So in that service order that you're seeing there, upon October 1st, 2025, you're at that 26,625 rate. And then October 1st of 2026, you're actually capped at that 3% annual increase for our existing clients. So that way you won't be subject to, because the way our pricing structure works, it's based on your overall budget size across all funds. So whether you get specific grants, the budget adjusts, you're never gonna get pushed into that next rate increase. And you're also not gonna be pushed into the annual rate increase on a year-by-year basis. So all you're gonna see is that 3% annual after that initial subscription year.
So we won't get pushed in that 6%?
Yeah, yeah, no, the only time you'll see the, the 6% is whenever your total term is up with ClearGov. And if you did want to renew, we'd give you the offer to renew at that 6%, given you still did want to continue, as opposed to you going into the next customer tier if your budget would have grown, or our current existing rates for non-clients.
Does that answer your question? All right. Anyone else have any discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, five oh. So it looks like we're doing business together, sir.
Look forward to working with you all, and yeah, thank you for your time today and allow me to present today.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Aaron, we're back to you. I think we're on item number four.
Okay, all right, commissioners, let's see here. This is another board information item. The legislative line item appropriation requests are due in February. The county's legislative, does the board have any project or requests in mind for staff to begin completing the request forms? Board, and just requesting board action provide staff with directions for what appropriations should be requested from the legislature.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The only thing that I know of, and the gentleman was supposed to come from the board, to the board and, and ask that this be one of our items, is the, the Alligator Point Fire Department out there at St. Teresa needs a brush truck, and that is a, sort of like a tanker brush truck, because they have a lot of fires out there, there's just bushes and stuff, and they need something to do that. So he was asking me if he could do it, but he never had contacted Michael Morong, so I kind of hate to put that as one of our items, if they're not really wanting it.
Yeah, well, the, the United Firefighters discussed that, the last meeting they had, I actually attended. They're supposed to be meeting again in January. And where they left it off in that meeting was a discussion between George Pruitt from East Point and the guy from Alligator Point, and they were supposed to decide which one they want to send to the channel. So they haven't done that yet, but they've not met yet either, so.
Well, see, he hasn't contacted me back, and I tried to email him, he hadn't.
And I, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I, I, you know, I've said this before in the past. I think a lot of our, to me personally, one of our legislative appropriation requests should be fire infrastructure, period. You know, fire hydrants, equipment. And that's where, I guess, the United Fireman, Firefighter Association's, I guess, gonna come in too. But we need to get that on the, on the ball. And I'm glad you brought this up, Aaron, because I was actually thinking to myself, I'm like, when, when does that come up? We need to get the ball rolling on that, because I know we go to the Capitol in, I think it's March. So we need to get going on that.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, so yesterday, the, the new 10-8 for the fire truck company came in to say hi and gave me his contact information, the previous gentleman's move. I think what may be a good idea, pass that contact information on to you, sir, and you pass it on so that when they have their next meeting, he is there, can talk to them about the cost for a different type of Meeting, he is there, can talk to them about the cost for a different type of trucks they could need, which will probably help them decide which one they'll go after next, you know, so. I'll, I'll send you that information, sir.
Sounds good. They had said, uh, among other things on their agenda in January, they're supposed to elect a new, uh, I guess, president of the association and then have that discussion about the, you know, asking for legislative appropriation. Uh, also, Ms. Erin, from talking with, uh, Mr. Ron LaFace from Capital City, which is our lobbyist, he's, he's still under, under the, uh, understanding that Franklin County is going to be asking for the second half of what wound up being a split request last year by the legislature. We asked for money for bear-resistant trash cans and they basically cut it in half and told him to ask for money to, in, in consecutive years. So he, he's still understanding that's going to be one of our asks. And I think it's around six hundred ninety thousand.
Yes, and FWC should be here next month at one of your meetings to discuss the, the money they already have and how, how we can spend it and to get reimbursement from them, so.
And another item too, you made me think about something, Mr. Chairman, this morning on, uh, the TV. They were talking about how the Speaker of the House and Senate President was coming in and what their, um.
Goals are.
Yeah, what they're, what they, they feel like they need to work toward. And one of the things were the infrastructure of the water, the sewer, because you still have cities in the state of Florida that are still on septic tanks.
Yeah, you do.
So that's another thing. So the fire hydrant, the water and all that, that's going to take priority in the, in the, in the legislative session this year. It's what I'm hearing, so.
All right. All right, Ms. Erin, it looks like we'll, uh, have a lot of discussion between now and January.
Yep.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And one thing that would be very helpful, Commissioners, because we are running short on time. Um, it would be wonderful if the fire chiefs could actually go ahead and reach out to ten-eight and actually have their estimates in hand when they, um, when they actually have that meeting in January. Um, because that's going to be important for us to actually have the, you know, the quote for whatever truck is decided upon in hand, um, in preparation for that appropriation request.
And, and Ms. Erin, also in conjunction with the way things are going to be for this session, we've already been made aware that there's only going to be three requests countywide regardless of municipality or county, correct?
Less than a million.
And they all have to be less than a million, a million or less. Oh, total? I didn't understand that.
That's the impression I got from, uh, Representative Schults' staff, and I could be wrong.
That's impossible.
I know.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty restrictive for, well, let me be honest. For a fiscally constrained county with the state owning over ninety percent of our property.
Yeah.
Will always be fiscally constrained.
Yeah.
There's never going to be a time where we're not going to need help from the state to fund things that we cannot do by ourselves.
Yes, so two que, uh, two questions first. Staff, you, you said you were going to meet and.
Yes.
We'll get back with them. One is, is it a million per project? Is it a million in total? And two, the way they made it sound when they called, they weren't sure, do we now have to include the two CDs and all the water districts? With one, you know, and, and rank those? They weren't clear about, you remember they did that a few years ago and that didn't work out for them. So it sounds like they're back to that again, uh, but we need clarification. Mr. Chairman, you said you and I would meet with them and get that done, but just.
We can bring it back to the board at the beginning of January, that meeting.
Oh, my goodness.
Whenever we meet in January.
If that's the truth, we're going to be in, at the cra.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah.
That's a hard ask.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Ms. Erin.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next item number five, um, attached is a contract amendment from the Division of Historic Resources for the TDC's Maritime Museum Grant. Um, this amendment extends the grant project completion deadline to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and this extension will allow for sufficient time for all project components and tasks to be completed and approved by DHR. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant extension amendment.
Pleasure to the board. Motion to approve by Commissioner Amoson, second by Commissioner Crean. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next action item number six. The vendor agreements expired on November thirtieth and as the finishing touches and final acceptance by DHR has not yet occurred for the Maritime Museum project, the attached amendments will ex, will extend the vendor agreements through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for the Apalachicola Bay Chamber of Commerce Forgotten Coast TV Coastal E-Solutions and Bay Media to complete the display work, videos, website and exhibits. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the contract amendments for the four vendors noted above for the TDC's Maritime Museum project.
Motion.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amoson.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crean. Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Erin, look at this, it has a different date than the previous item we just, uh, considered and voted for. Is that going to be long enough for these vendors to finish? I mean, I'm hoping we're at the end here.
From what we understand, they are very close, um, even right now. Um, and one reason for, uh, the difference in dates is that we wanted to be sure that the project was one hundred percent buttoned up before, um, DH, to give DHR their time for their final approval to occur, um, before the grant expiration.
Good, that sounds appropriate and, uh, thank you. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next item is, um, action item number seven. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection has sent the attached two-hundred-thousand-dollar Firdapp Grand Award Agreement for Island View Park. The park enhancements will include the addition of a picnic pavilion with an adjacent ADA restroom, a small playground, a fenced dog run park area and a kayak launch. There is a substantial amount of paperwork that must be completed prior to the county receiving a notice to commence from FDEP before any construction activities can begin. And we are also, um, in talks with Mr. Phil Corum with the Florida Communities Trust Program, uh, because he may also be able to assist with some funding, um, for the ADA accessible restroom building. Um, so that's been a positive development just in the last week or so. Um, and so board action to retroactively approve and authorize the chairman to sign the grand award agreement, which was returned to FDEP last week. Um, and one reason why we had to actually expedite the signature process on this one um, was because with the holidays, uh, they needed time for, uh, their department to actually execute and get back to us before the first of the year.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Sanders. It is seconded by Commissioner Amoson. Any discussion?
I have a little discussion.
Yes.
This is, uh, the, the enhancements that she just named off, those are enhancements that we had a public meeting on over there and that, that they, uh, the people there, this is what they basically wanted to see to enhance the, uh, facilities out there at Island View.
Yeah, very excited to get going on this one.
Yes, sounds good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aha.
Opposed? That's a five oh vote. Go ahead, Ms. Erin.
Okay, um, next action item number eight. Uh, Parks Director Fonda Davis has submitted the attached thirty-one thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cent quote based upon OMIA contract pricing for the DW Wilson Sports Arena. The original request already approved by the TDC was for three sets of bleachers up to twenty-five thousand dollars in cost. However, Mr. Davis would like for the VOCC and the TDC to consider the attached quote for five, which he feels would provide the best amount of seating during, during tournaments. Board action to approve the attached quote for five sets of bleachers at the sports arena to be paid by TDC's sales tax proceeds and authorize the issuance of a purchase order upon approval of the additional sets by the TDC board at their next meeting.
Amen.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
I'll second with question.
Second by two, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Amoson. Go ahead, Commissioner Ward.
So you said three sets, but then Mr. Davis said he would like five. Are, are the three sets being paid by TDC and two from the board's budget? Or are all five going to come out of TDC funds?
All five would be coming from TDC funds.
All right, thank you, that, that answered my question, appreciate it.
Yeah, Ms. Erin, you worded this way because we're going to take this amendment back to the TDC board in January for their approval as well, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Any, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's a five oh vote.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next item number nine. Um, this is for the SGI Beach Park Facilities Upgrade. Um, after discussion with project engineers and the awarded vendor Premier Surfacing for the SGI Basketball and Pickleball Courts, the county may want to consider the attached nineteen thousand fifty-dollar change order to construct the basketball and pickleball courts with post-tension concrete materials. This construction upgrade would also include twelve-inch by twelve-inch turn downs and five inches of concrete throughout the pad. Post-tension concrete slab construction eliminates the need for expansion joints and minimizes reflective and surface cracking over time. The contractor will begin construction on this project on February first. And board action to approve the attached change order for post-tension concrete construction to be paid out of TDC's Beach Park Facility Improvement Funds.
Amen.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Amoson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next action item number ten. Um, FWC has sent the attached extension amendment for the SGI Boat Ramp Breakwater Design Grant. The attached amendment will extend the project completion date to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to allow for sufficient time for the completion of the required hydrographic study and issuance of the permits. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached extension amendment.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Amoson. Discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's also unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, next action item number eleven, and I do apologize for having such a long report this time. I was trying to get a lot of things wrapped up by the end of the year.
It's all good.
Okay, um, each year the county formally updates the capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plans to reflect upcoming goals and projects within the county. This list assists with planning processes and, and the development of grant funding applications. A copy of the current capital improvement schedule is attached to this report and requesting board action to approve scheduling and advertising a public hearing to update the capital improvement plan.
So move.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crean. Discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next action item is item number thirteen, um, and that one was part of the update that I had just sent you all. Um, but it was already scheduled on my report. Um, as anticipated, Bluff Road has settled over the area of last year's culvert patch and Commissioner Amoson had asked for staff to get a quote to patch the settled section of the road. The attached four thousand five hundred dollar quote from Jason White Construction will mill one foot beyond either side of the six-foot wide settled area over the culvert and bring the elevation of the finished surface even with the rest of the road. Board action to approve the attached quote to be paid by District Four's paving funds.
So move.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crean. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
That goes in speed, ma'am.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Erin.
Okay, um, and next action item number fourteen, um, it's the C thirty Gulf Avenue Road Patch. Um, as contractor Jason White was already looking at the pavement patch for Bluff Road, staff also asked for a quote to patch the eroded asphalt areas of C thirty Gulf Avenue and Carabelle as the dispute for the mitigation work FEMA is ongoing due to duplication of the GPS coordinates and the damage descriptions with the C thirty west of Apalachicola repairs. Um, and in all honesty, had I known at the time that FEMA was going to take so long for this resolution, I would have probably presented you all with this, um, road patch estimate earlier. Um, but unfortunately it has just, uh, been dragging on ever so slowly and we still, um, I mean, to this date, I, I don't know how long the resolution will take, um, before FEMA will actually grant us that project. Um, to get the road back to smooth and safe traveling condition, uh, the attached nine thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollar quote will patch the three areas of eroded asphalt to two feet beyond the damage even with the existing pavement grade and compact the existing road base and the damaged areas and add a paint stop bar and fifty linear feet of double yellow lines at the C thirty Gulf Avenue junction with Highway ninety-eight, which is needed for safety. Um, board action to approve the attached quote to be paid by District Two's paving funds.
So move with question.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. It was seconded by Commissioner Amoson. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I just want the public to be aware, it says, you know, obviously we've got a particular contractor with, with this and we don't have to go out for bids because it's under that ten thousand dollar cap, right?
It's actually under twenty-five thousand.
That's right, we go up there, yeah.
Yep.
I just want the public to be aware, well, why are they, you know, approving this individual to do it? That's wise because he gave a quote less than twenty-five thousand, which doesn't require us to go, uh, out for bid. So I just want the public to be aware of that. Thanks, Chairman.
I'm, I'm too stressed about it because, you know, the thing about this, this is something from Hurricane Michael.
It is.
Two thousand eighteen.
It is, six years ago.
And I'm going to tell you something. They don't have any intentions. They won't use the GPS tracking thing or whatever else. It, it's whatever they want to use, but the thing comes down to it's the people that pay for it to get fixed. That's it.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, um, and I just have a couple of informational items for you guys. Uh, the Lanark EMS Station Project, there'll be a mandatory pre-bid meeting, uh, tomorrow, December eighteenth, at the East Point Administration Building at nine AM. And the bids will be open at the January seventh meeting. Uh, the FDEP field permit is now in hand, uh, for the replacement of the Sixth Street West Dune Walkover on Saint George Island. The solicitation for construction bids, uh, will be ready for advertisement soon. The Eighth Street East Permit Application is farther behind due to some encroachment issues which are being addressed by Attorney Schuler. Um, there's also, uh, the public notice for the Army Corps of Engineers Permit for the CR sixty-seven, uh, Phase Four project has now been posted. This is the last step before the Army Corps will be able to issue the permit. Engineers feel that the permit will be issued in early January for the project and, uh, construction funding is already in hand. This final phase will ride, lighten and resurface the last two and a half miles of CR sixty-seven to the Liberty County Line.
All right. Anyone else, uh, Commissioners, y'all have anything else for Ms. Griffith while we're still in this part of the meeting?
Yeah, um, I have a question for Erin. Que, uh, question, Erin, on these, um, I know you, you was talking about the pickleball courts and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any updates on the pickleball courts at Kendrick or either the Lanark one?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, at, at Kendrick Park, I have seen his first sketch, um, actually from Dewberry Engineers as far as for, um, overlaying the existing tennis court with, uh, actually four pickleball courts.
Okay.
Uh, so I'll go ahead and send, send that to you, Commissioner Sanders. And I'm, um, awaiting a formal quote from, uh, the Premier Surfacing Bender who was awarded the Saint George Island Project for the, um, s- single pickleball court there in, uh, Lanark.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you all so much too and happy holidays, see you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Amen.
Ms. Erin, have we had any, uh, communication back from DEP about the, the maintenance permit that we need for the dredge spoil area in East Point?
We have not had any further communication, uh, Commissioner, yeah.
Okay, I just, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to ask. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chairman, you want to take a, do y'all want to stretch your legs for a bit?
Do y'all want to take a break or what do y'all want to do?
It don't matter, whatever you choose, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ms. Morong.
All right.
We might be a minute, so go ahead.
Yeah, we'll be a little bit here, I have, I have a feeling. Um, okay, action, um, item number one. That's what I'm saying, you can just take one, I mean, yes.
Is that what it was, she wanted that?
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah, it's up to you.
We don't have a solid five. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Mr. Michael Morone, County Coordinator, you're up next.
Oops, okay, Commissioners, page twenty-six, action item number one. At your last meeting, the board discussed the redesign of this meeting room to accommodate both county court and the county commission meetings. After discussing a few design options, the board asked for a floor plan and rendering that would create a new crescent moon. I said horseshoe, they prefer crescent moon styled desk, that would have a, a slightly raised floor where the judge and the chairman would sit. That draft floor plan and rendering is attached to my report for your review and approval. Once approved, then we can proceed with the redesigned project.
Mr. Morone, I have a question.
Sir?
In what they've submitted, are they still intending to keep those pews, or they're gonna replace them with chairs?
I would probably ask it as an option, sir, like, you know, how, when we have bids, we have like a, a, an additional.
Alternative.
Alternative, thank you, Commissioner, an alternate bid to do that.
Okay.
Because I know you asked for that last time, so I mentioned that to them, but I told them they could include that as an alternate.
Okay. I'm good with it. How does, how does the rest of the board feel?
I'm fine with it, too.
I'm fine with this one.
All right, so it is for board action.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, buckle up. At your last meeting, there was a lengthy discussion regarding a change to your regularly monthly meeting days and/or time. Below, as, as requested, here are some of the options based on those discussions. Move the meetings to the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, starting at nine. This would eliminate any conflicts with court schedule. However, the fourth Thursday would conflict with your twenty twenty-five FAC Annual Conference in June and both Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. The board would need to change those meeting dates, similar to what we do, like, for instance, July fourth, if it falls on a meeting day, uh, to, to another date, Commissioners. Uh, there needs to be a discussion regarding the scheduling of public hearings and workshops, if that was a consideration. The other, uh, neck, another option is to move the meeting times to one PM. On, on our current meeting days, which are the first and third Tuesday of every month, I discussed, this could result in frequent lengthy meetings that would last into the late evenings, and as, as in addition to that, I talked to, uh, uh, Royce yesterday when he came to set up. He, because of sometimes he has, uh, it'll be a scheduled conflict to go beyond probably four thirty, four, four thirty for him, if we run late on a, on a day, because he has other commitments already scheduled. Um, some Commissioners had suggested one meeting per month. This meeting would start at nine in the morning, but would last most of the day. If needed, a special meeting would be called to address any emergency issues that could not wait until the next monthly meeting. In addition to that, we could schedule public hearings, workshops, other lengthy discussions on, off, uh, any of the other meeting dates that we, during the month. Leave it at that. A policy change to matters like paying the bills, that would be necessary, because we would still have to pay the bills whether or not the county commission meets, and then ratify the payment of those bills at the next regular meeting. Um, and I'll stop there for discussion or direction or action or whatever comes about.
Let, let me ask, let me, let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you and, and, uh, uh, Mr. Otis, y'all are the ones that had the most problems on Tuesday mornings, right? How would you be on Tuesday at one o'clock? Would you still have a problem?
It wouldn't be a much of a problem, but it would still be pretty significant for what I'm doing.
That's, I'm just asking the question.
Tuesdays is rough. I'm usually Thursday before I recover from Tuesday, to be honest with you.
Why couldn't we have one meeting on Tuesday and one meeting on Wednesday? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to figure out some, I'm, because it don't bother me, my time is my time, you know?
Yeah.
But.
I mean, if the, if the second and the fourth Wednesday doesn't conflict with the court schedule, I'm fine with that, too.
See, and another thing, too, and, and I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Chairman, but I, I mean, one o'clock will work, but obviously, we have some staff issues with the clerk's office and other folks, uh, Royce, which I completely understand. Um, that guy might have one of them brain cramps. But, uh, but, but, I mean, um, this isn't a set in stone thing. I mean, it can be, you know, we can try the shoe on, if it don't fit, we take it off, you know, and, and try something else if we want.
Yeah, well, that's why I said, he's got two solutions up here, either Wednesday, second and fourth, or either one o'clock on Tuesday.
I believe Tuesdays is one o'clock, not gonna, that, that would just won't.
Not gonna be that much of a difference.
And, and, you know, again, we have issues with staff, and, and I can understand that. Um, I, I mean, I, I personally would like to just try the Wednesday, and if it don't work, then we'll go back. But, 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 you know, again, it's not my only motivation that Tuesday's a rough day personally. I mean, I've been making it work, obviously, Commissioner, Jones has been making it work for quite a long time. Uh, but, uh,
Yeah.
But then again, it's, it's our staff, it's our prep and getting prepared for these meetings. Um, that's, that's been a, a challenge, especially on holidays, uh, when we have that.
Definitely better, or Wednesday would definitely be better for staff.
Yeah, and, and you know, uh, that, that, that was one of the major concerns as well. Um, but again, we're all a team here, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever.
I'm fine with, with moving it to Wednesdays, and if it don't work, we can always change it back.
My only concern with Wednesdays is when I was going through the calendars, like I said, I was fine with it, but majority of our stuff, uh, like your policies conference, your pack, and your rural county day, legislative day, is on that Wednesday. That's the only, that was my only.
Is it on the second or, or fourth Wednesday, though?
Uh.
Or just Wednesdays?
Majority of our, on Wednesdays, I didn't look if it was on.
I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but I mean, you know, say, but, but we've, we've addressed others like that, so same thing, if we have a holiday that falls, this year, Christmas is on a Wednesday, isn't it? You know what I mean? So.
It is.
You know, so obviously, we would be doing, if we had a meeting that was gonna fall at Christmas time, we'd be doing it probably a couple of days before. You know, which is common for us to do anyway. You know, if it falls on a meeting day, same thing with, Mr. Morone mentioned July fourth, sometimes it's falling.
First Tuesday.
On, on the first Tuesday of the month, so we either have it on that Monday, or we have it on the Wednesday. We've already done that in the past, I don't have any issue with that.
I got a question for Mr. Morone.
Yes.
Um, the second, fourth Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, you've looked at some calendars, I mean, you, there's a reason why, I know how tactful you are. You shifted it from the first and third to the second and fourth.
The problem, the, the third Wednesday is a conflict with court. That's when the county jury, if the county has a, correct me, ma'am, county jury selected on the third Wednesday.
Okay.
Most of the time, it's fine, but next year's docket, it's, it's getting worse, if I could say, in the third floor courtroom. So that's why we even talk about the redesign, because there's a push to move county court back over here.
Yeah.
Actually, I have, there's a couple of times I have a, a magistrate scheduled over here because of the third floor, uh, county court. So that's, that's why it's not the first and the third Wednesday, it's the second and the fourth. And I'll say this, either which way, if, if you're planning to make that transition, uh, uh, in January, the first Tuesday, which is the seventh, is where we would normally meet. The second Wednesday would be the eighth the next day, so it won't be that much of a difference, because, because New Year's is on a Wednesday. You see what I'm saying, so?
Yep.
Then, but I, I say that just as, if you're worried about from today's meeting on to the, to the next meeting.
It'd be a one-day change.
Yes.
Going at the box.
Now, I, well, I, well.
Let, let me ask you this as well, and this is more so in concern for Commissioner Ward.
I was just gonna speak on that, yes, sir.
We may not be able to start this until she can possibly.
Correct.
Um, I don't know how far after y'all's schedule, what I'm saying, Jesus.
Well, actually, it just so happens that we've got two staff members on FMLA right now, so I'm actually working extra days. Like, I haven't hardly any days off for the next two months.
Okay.
So my schedule goes out till, uh, February, and right now, the FMLA folks won't be back until February, March.
Yeah.
But if you guys wanna change it to Wednesday, that's, that's okay, I just need to have time to accommodate my schedule with my other job.
And that's, that's what I was getting at, so why don't we just do this, well, I don't know, let's see, how, how to go about this. I'm, 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 will we need to just?
You could.
Tale this, or either make a motion on what, what we potentially wanna do contingent on?
If, if you're wanting to change it, if you want to make a motion to move the meets to the second and fourth Wednesday,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we can do it contingent upon hearing from Commissioner Ward that her schedule's gonna allow for that switch, and then we switch when her schedule allows.
Well, that's.
So if I were to be April.
Well, I appreciate that, I don't, I, I, I don't know if these individuals are gonna be out for the full twelve weeks on FMLA, but I, we have to, we have to assume that they are. And, uh, you know, I would like to go back to them and talk to my manager and say, hey, look, this is gonna change, because I already have Tuesday off anyway, because of the meetings. I could, it's probably not gonna be that much of a shift to take Wednesday off and then work a Tuesday, that's not gonna be a problem. I just need to let my fellow staff members aware of that so that they can accommodate, because they all have second jobs as well. And I would appreciate that, just to be able to, to do that.
And that's what I'm trying to incorporate that into.
And once the two individuals get back, because we have two full-time, it's not a, it's full-time people, so like, I'm working through the holidays, I'm working, I'm working extra, I'm working Friday extra day, working some Sunday. So, yeah, I've got, my schedule's gonna be pretty busy, but when they get back. Yes, for Christmas, uh, or after FMLA, then I can, I, I'm gonna talk, start talking to them now.
Yeah.
But I will say, hey, look, this is what's gonna happen, is there any way we can accommodate that? I'm sure they can, but it's gonna be tight right now, at least till I get those, we get those two staff members back off FMLA, which is looking to February, March.
If we do that, we could make it tentative for April, if we'll start that.
Well, just make it contingent upon when her.
Oh, what she says, okay, that's fine.
When she greenlights it, we can.
Because my schedule is out till right now, February.
Yeah.
So, at least till then.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we try this contingent on the timeframe that, with Commissioner Ward, and, uh, if the shoe don't fit, we'll try another pair.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Amison?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crum, and we are voting on moving our scheduled meeting days, regular meetings, to the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, contingent upon, uh, when Commissioner Ward says that her schedule will allow for us to start resuming those meetings on those days. Any other discussion before we vote?
So clarification or something?
Yes.
So the date can be, the date can be moved up if, like, say, if, um, like our legislative day is on that Wednesday.
Yeah.
We can.
We can move to the Tuesday.
Just gotta get proper notice, yeah?
Well, we just give notice ahead of time, if you'll notice at the end of, and I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to cut anybody off. At the end of Mr. Moron's report, it always says when our next meeting is going to be. Yeah, so it's always at least two weeks out, people are confirmed at our meeting in public when our next meeting is going to be.
So I'm, I'm saying there's no set in stone.
That was my concern.
And, Mr. Chairman, one thing you'll have to consider is when, uh, once we start doing this, is, uh, as a T D C chairman, inform T D C that they may have to change their meeting dates, because they meet on the second or fourth. Tuesday of every month.
I thought it was the third Wednesday.
Oh, it is?
I, I, what I thought it was.
It's either the second or the third Wednesday, it's, it is the second Wednesday. Okay.
Second.
Second Wednesday. So, yeah, they, they'd have to do something a little bit different. But, yeah, it's entirely another action item, but if we go more to consent agenda, if the board approves that today, maybe we're not still meeting at two o'clock on a Wednesday, maybe we're already done. Uh, that's just putting that out there. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Mr. Chairman, speaking of what you just said, so changes to the way regular meetings are conducted, that was also part of that discussion. So starting in two thousand twenty-five, and this is, I'm, I'm saying this because that's how we approached, how we discussed it at last meeting. Your planning of zoning, director, staff, and county attorney's report will be addressed in a consent manner. Therefore, all action items in a report will be approved with one motion, unless there's a commission request to discuss a particular action item outside of that consent motion. Discussion and information items would not be part of the consent motion, so you guys could still discuss that. To accomplish this change, all reports would be available to the board and the public for calendar days prior to that meeting day. Another change agreed to by the board is the approval of items that are part of an approved project. Once a project is approved, you guys do that all the time, any, any related items would be discussed with that district commissioner, and when the district commissioner approves it, it will be signed by the chairman and processed. Then that approved item would be on the next meeting agenda as an informational item. A third change would be, uh, discussed will be project items in Ms. Erin Griffith's report. Uh, moving forward, Erin would include links on her report that would take you, or anybody else, directly to the county's project public portal that contains the information on a particular project, therefore reducing the amount of information that is typed in her report. Did I capture everything, commissioners, are the three things we talked about? So, um, if the board, uh, is ready to proceed with those changes, I need some action for all three as stated above.
Michael, there's only one other thing we need to consider, and you mentioned it before. So what, and Clark Maxwell, you might need to chime in on this, what do we need to do or consider as far as the payment of bills? Do y'all still wanna do it in the way we do it, or?
I didn't bring it, because I was only using that if we met once a month, but if we wanted to change, I mean, if we're gonna be twice a month, I don't think there's a change needed, I don't believe.
And Tuesday and Wednesday is not gonna matter, just the one day, okay?
Okay, I just wanted to, it, it's, it's, it's your department, I just wanted to ask. Y'all do that on behalf of the board, and we're thankful for it, I just wanted to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I mean, I'm okay with this, but I do have something that I would like to bring up, and I spoke to Michael Moron about it already. But, um, I know a lot of times, we have an agenda item or items, and we talk about it, we voted on it, and then it seems like nothing gets talked about or discussed, or it gets brought up again, and it seems like, I don't wanna say ball gets dropped, but it just seems like nothing ever happens, or there's no continuity, and then three months later, or four months later, we're bringing it up at another meeting, and it just kinda starts to process over again. So I don't know with this format, if there's a way that we can say, like, all right, we discussed, um, just throwing this out there, Humane Society shooting range at three meetings ago. I do realize that we have certain checks and balances that have to take place, like, we're waiting for the engineer, we're waiting for federal or state permits, or, or, uh, answers from other individuals that, that haven't really been responsive to us. But I just feel like that moving forward to keep that continuity, maybe we can do it a way where we have, like, old and new business, right? This is what was discussed at last meeting, we get an answer, Michael says, all right, just like we kinda do with informational items, except make it to where, all right, this is the, if it's something that's gonna take a long time to, uh, to get a finality on, then we could say, all right, well, this is an update, like, like the FEMA stuff, I know that's a pain in the butt, but just so that we can have some kinda continuity, instead of talking about something, and nobody says anything about it again until three or four meetings later, it gets brought up again, because someone, one of our constituents brings it up, or, or we get thinking of it, or we, I like trying to go back and follow up on my emails, I got something in my calendar where I'll be like, all right, follow up on this topic or that topic, just to try to give some kind of, some, some finality to these things.
What I could do, and, and I won't make mine as fancy as Erin's, uh, 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 project public portal, but I could basically create a, a spreadsheet, or any, any document that has, because I'm more task driven, where she's more project driven, where I can have a task and say, let, let's take the shooting range. So, you know, first, we had to wait for the, the wetlands delineation, we did that. Then we had to, then you, myself, Howard, we, we met, we did that, and we determined what we wanted. Then we submitted to Zooberry for some information, so they have then, they have since submitted back to us, so they're waiting for three months to be with them, because there's gonna be a cost to, to that. And so I could have that where, and as an internal document for each task, where we, where we're at, with dates and times, what's the next move, and you guys could look at, and then you guys bring it up during my report, say, hey, I looked at, I looked at the status, I'm not comfortable where we are there, can we do something else? You know, I could do it that way, rather than listing every single task on my report and making it, you know, kinda long, you, you see?
Well, and I, I don't wanna add more work to you, but that's, that's my whole point, I think it's gonna help you in the long run, because if we as commissioners come up and say, hey, just like I did the other day, where are we at with this, and where are we at with that? Or what's the top, what's the finality of this? And I know a lot of times, we talk about stuff at the meeting, but then after the fact, you'll do what you need to do that we direct you to do, and then you'll call each individual, say, hey, this is what happened, but it may not get back on the record for the public to be aware of where that finality of that topic is, and I, I think it's just a way, too, to be more transparent, you know, we talked about transparency earlier, I'm all about that. And I'm not saying we're not transparent, I just wanna say it's more of a way to increase our transparency to the public, so that they know where a, 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 a object or subject stands, um, the way it, the way it moves through the, the process.
In that case, then I could, I can do like Erin, have them create another portal, I'll just call it the, I'll, I'll figure a name out, but call it that, and relate it back to that commission, so yet even the public sees, the commissioners see, so if there is a task that they wanna know about, and they have a question about, they go there, see where we are, and then they can question, and then we could bring it up at a meeting if it's an issue.
Okay.
You see?
Yeah.
That, that saves, though Erin has like thirty projects open, I'm, I can't remember how many tasks I have open right now. That saves having to put all that in a report, but there's somewhere everyone can go and see that, that's, that's, yeah.
And, and I think, too, it'll help staff with, oh, gosh, you know, I haven't heard from these FEMA people, or these state federal people in a while, maybe we need to reach back out to them and kinda follow up and light some fire under some buttons we need to, so to speak. But that's just my opinion, I don't know what the other commissioners thought around that, but.
So what, what has been our, the way we've been operating, it's not that we haven't done them, or have forgotten about some of those things, but it's like Mr. Moron has just enumerated, uh, whether this board gave them by motion or by direction a task to do, they're, they're not bringing it back to us till they have it to a point where it's actionable. You know what I mean? So it's not that they're not, not following up, or not having the other meetings they need to have, but they, they bring it back to us, or he talks to me about putting it on the agenda as your current chair, when, when it's ready again for action. And we can actually move the project forward by something we need to do, you know, but, but it's not that they're, I guess, being forgotten, but I understand what you're saying, I mean, it, it, trust me, I, I never had to hardly ever call Michael Moron on a Monday, because I've talked to him so much anyway, I already, I mean, I know what's coming on, so.
But what, um, gosh, lost, getting like Commissioner Amerson, I just lost my.
And I'm not trying to say nobody's not, not doing their job, I'm, I know that, that's a, but I'm just trying to think, you know, just for, for me and for the, the public, I think it would just be easier, and I think it'd make y'all's jobs easier, too, where you're not like, all right, well, this is where that's at, instead of having to thumb through emails or.
You hit on something that's perfect, because if I do do a portal and it's there, guess what? I could send you a link to the portal, what I do, rather than having to make one, two, three, four, five, four calls.
There you go.
And then one thing changes, and I gotta make one, two, three, four, five, four, so, yes, so the portal would be helpful, and, yeah, again, the public or, or the commissioners could bring up something that's in the portal that you have a question with, rather than me listing all the, you know, the outstanding stuff. Yeah, that works for me.
I know that kinda went away from what we were.
So can I, we just add that to the motion, just add?
That's, that's kinda why I wanna bring that up, yeah.
No, that's fine.
Since Erin's is called project, I'll find another name and could call mine, but we'll have it out on the website and start to update it.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, uh, these meeting procedure changes to go more to consent agenda by Commissioner Ward. Second from Commissioner Sanders, do we have an additional discussion, commissioners?
Just, the only, only thing, I'm not saying that I'm against this by any means, just hear me out, but the, the, the public's, the transparency, we just gotta, you know, that's gonna be huge.
Yeah, so, so here's the transparency thing, I hear you, Commissioner, here's the, the thing is, Erin and I have to stick to that four calendar day prior to the meeting rule. That's what allows the transparency, if it's out there, those, those four, four days prior to the meeting allows your constituents to talk to you, you guys to talk to us, and if something needs to be changed or fixed, rewarded, more information, it could be done. We're going, I'm, I'll take it lightly, that, that's a task in itself, commissioners, for both of us. I'll tell you right now, that's a cultural change for both Erin and myself, but we'll get it done, you know, because the, the outcome is worth it, in my opinion, you know? But, yeah, Commissioner Amerson, that's, that's where the transparency is right there. I mean, the public has to do their part, too, if we're putting it out there for days, then they have to go look and read and call and question, you know, what's going on. They can't say, well, we didn't know about this, well, it's been there. Let me say this, I'm so glad you brought that up, because I'm thinking about this, I had a conversation with Courtney yesterday. So Erin doesn't know this yet, is she still on? Well, so, no, she's gone, hold on.
That's gonna be good.
I'm looking at the wrong column.
I like the one sentence was turned out like this.
She's gone, okay, so I can say, so, um, what we're gonna start next year is gonna be very limited, and, and Chairman Jones, Commissioner Ward, you've kind of been, you've kind of not, you've done more than hinted about this. I'm going to go ahead and create a county Facebook page.
Okay.
Okay? How are we gonna start off, and I know that's a nightmare to you.
Just turn the comments section off.
Turned it off.
Yes, I'm gonna turn off the comments, that's the, that's one part. The other part, we're gonna start off by just putting links back to the website, links of the meeting agenda, of, of the recording of the meetings. Notices that things that we put on the headlines, on the front page, all that, we're gonna put on the Facebook page with a link back. Facebook is the only way I can get the public to look at the website, I hate to say that.
It's true, it's very true.
It's very true.
You know, I've been resisting that, but resistance isn't working for me, so, you know, that, that's, that's my plan. We're gonna start off simple, uh, comments off, and just links back to the website with information. As we grow and we get better with this, then we'll start putting snippets of what we've done, you know, like today, the board approved, you know, some of the projects you did, you know? I could do it in a general way right now with a back to Erin's report on the report, if the board approved these following things today. But I would like to get more public relations style with it, if I can say that, you know? Commissioners, that's gonna take some time, I, I, you know, I mean, like, we're all in the, gonna have to get accustomed to it, and we, we, we'll get there. But I'm, I am gonna start it in January, and I, I have to sit down and research the public records rule about that, and what we have to maintain and how we maintain, you know, because anybody could ask for anything we've posted thus far. That's why I'm keeping it simple, with a lot of links back to the county's website.
Well, if you keep comments off, it's a lot simpler.
Yes, I will.
Because you don't have to worry about reporting what was deleted or what was taken off.
Yes, and what we're going to say, if you have a comment or a question, feel free to email staff or go to the complaint, uh, link on the county's website, and, and, and offer your comments there about something that's posted on Facebook. That's, because there we have records retention already set up.
Yes.
So thank you, Commissioner Amerson, I almost forget to, I forgot to mention that this morning, so, yeah.
But the other thing, too, that Mr. Moron and I have discussed for a while now, is to the best of our ability, if it's not time sensitive, like today, the presentation from ClearGov, they really needed a, a answer from the board before January first, or the price change is gonna be different. So that was the only reason we had a presentation and a decision in the same meeting. Uh, but going forward, I've talked to Mr. Moron about the possibility of trying to do any of our workshops, presentations, almost like old business, new business, that Commissioner Ward mentioned before, would be done on one meeting, and then be up for consent on the next agenda. After, you know, staff can, we can all talk with staff, staff talk with us, they can refine what they think the board is looking for in an approval, you know what I mean? So that, that, that's the way we're gonna try to approach what's going on the agenda as well. So that adds even more transparency to the mix, because, I mean, I, I don't know another way to say this than just to say it. When I first got on this board, we would bring up stuff in the meeting, vote on it, and they, nobody looked at nothing at the time. We have gone away from that business model, is all I can say. So that, that's another way we've talked about trying to address that, because I had the same concern. So how are we gonna, so put it up to vote, and nobody's gonna be, you know what I mean? So we're not, that's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is, ideally, we would have had a presentation from ClearGov at the last meeting, and then the day it would have been our consent agenda.
I got you.
You know, going forward, does that address your questions?
It does, and then, you know, the only other issue, I guess, that we may potentially have is our advisory boards are gonna want to kinda follow suit and start going with consent agendas, which I'm not really in favor of.
Well, some of their stuff, they, they need to actually hash out and talk out.
Exactly, I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're getting.
Yeah.
They're, they're kinda the opposite of you, their reason is to hash it out for you, to be very.
And that's what I don't, I don't wanna see all of our advisory boards go to a consent agenda just to get out there, they meet once a month, and then they wanna jump and get out there in, in an hour.
That was the point.
Whenever we're basing, you know, we're basing our major decisions off of what they're doing.
Off their advice, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't support that.
I'm sorry, where are we?
We're, we're discussing before we vote.
Oh, okay.
Just make sure everybody, does ask any questions, who wanna ask? Any additional discussion, commissioners? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, I'm not even gonna read word for word the rest, A R P C appointment is Chairman Jones, he represents the county seat. And usually, we rotate between, uh, Appalachia and Carabelle, it's usually the mayor's or somebody else from that city commission. So Carabelle has had it how long, uh, Mr. Chairman?
They've had it for two years.
Okay, so it's time to rotate to Appalachia?
It is time to rotate.
Okay.
Yes.
So I just need a, a motion reappointing, um, the chairman, and having me reach out to, to Appalachia to do that. And the, Chairman Jones, a while back, you'd asked me to contact, I mean, it's La Paz.
Yes.
The problem with that is, and I'm sorry I didn't update you with this, see, that would have been Commissioner Ward, it'd have been on the portal. The, the governor's appointment has to be an elected official.
Huh?
That's what I read online.
No.
I'm not, not online, that letter that A R P C sent, they said that it has been, so no.
That's no. No, because Mr. Stottermeyer, that passed away recently from Liberty County, was just a citizen representative on the board.
On the governor's appointment? All right, I'll reach back out and find out.
Yeah, no, it, it can be, yeah, it can just be, it's, it's actually set up for citizens.
Okay.
It doesn't, it's supposed to be non-governmental, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, then I'm gonna, I'll verify that, then I'll stick with the plan and reach out to Mr. La Paz.
Yeah, because the way it's set up, that board, the, the structure of that board, ideally, if you have a governor appointee, then you have the county represented.
The city.
The municipality represented, and, and, and the residents represented.
Okay, I'll reach back out, and then I'll reach out to Ms. La Paz, because that was, the board agreed back then to, to, to reach out to her, okay?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I need the, the motion to reappoint the chairman, and then, um, Oh, I'm sorry, so I need the, the motion to reappoint the chairman and then, uh, then reach out to the seat of Appalachia to, to send us an appointment for that.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Emerson. Uh, any discussion? I will say, thank you commissioners, I will say that, uh, they haven't voted on it yet, but Mr. Rito asked me last meeting about continuing to serve for two more years as the chair, because our vice chair did not win his election. So the person that was in line, Mr. Jim Peacock from, uh, Jackson County that was up next to be chair for two years, did not win his reelection, so.
There's a lot of people that lost, that shot man, Jim Peacock.
Yes.
Oh, you know it was a Peacock, Commissioner Sanders? I, I didn't, I, yeah.
I've al- I've known him for years.
Yeah, but anyway, thank you and we'll hopefully, uh, I guess the city of Appalachia will be able to make a recommendation to us, correct?
Yeah, I'll try to have that before you guys are the next meeting. I'll let Travis know.
Alright, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And Gulf consortium appointments, Commissioner, it's the chairman, uh, and myself as alternate, but what they asked for to have two alternates and they would prefer one of the alternates is another elected official, because they have issues meeting Crumbs during their, their meetings for some reason.
Can I make a motion? I would like for e- either one of y'all can pick it, but either, either Commissioner Amison or Commission, Commissioner Crumbs be the alternate.
They both can, and now they don't have to do it.
Okay, I make a motion that Commissioner Crumbs and Commissioner Amison.
Are the two alternates?
Be, yeah.
Okay.
And that's my motion.
Alright. So we have a motion to, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second as long as they're okay with that.
Well, that's good.
Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, that's why, uh.
Voluntold, voluntold, yeah.
That's why I.
Well, that's why you had to be the first one to make a motion.
I just wanna.
Did we have a second to that motion?
Yes, I second Chairman.
Alright, so we have a, a motion made by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward.
And that's for the alternate poll.
To, to allow me to continue to serve on the, uh, Gulf consortium with the backups or alternates of Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Crumbs.
And I'm gonna do this in a different frame of mind. There's another part of this item right here, and I'm gonna ask the chairman. It said, Michael, go ahead and read it.
Hold on, let's handle one motion at a time. No, we, we hadn't voted yet. Did you have a question?
I, I do now. My only thing with this is, is can we all three?
That was my question.
We, we can all three sit on there together though, I mean, so basically if you can't, not at the same time, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to communicate and say, hey, I can't attend this meeting, can you attend?
Yeah, I can, well, okay.
Yeah, I got you, I just getting clear.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, we can't all three attend. That would be nice, we could stack the deck.
Really?
Wouldn't matter for consortium service.
But that's the reason why y'all are alternates.
I, I understand, I just wanted to clarify that in my brain, because I'm liable to pop in there and Ricky or, or Anthony will be on there and then here, here I am smiling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Attorney Schuler sweating.
Doesn't most of the meetings have a consortium now? Doesn't it coincide with FAC and?
Some of them do, but some of them don't. I had one last Friday.
It was conference call meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, it was on Zoom?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was on Zoom, that's what I'm saying.
And remember, I, I attended one at FAC in, in Orlando.
Yeah, so, you can be there.
Alright, any additional discussion before we vote on this motion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Actually, what, the, the, what Commissioner Sanders was trying to do is squeeze both into one motion, because
No, no.
For the executive committee, I think it's what she was trying to do.
Well, who's, who's the, I'll ask you, Mr. Chairman, who's, who's the chair now of the consortium?
Chris Constance.
Yes, I have this.
From Charlotte County, right?
Yes.
Okay, who's the vice chairman?
I do not remember his name.
I'll have to look, I, I actually, I had an email on.
I've got a reason why I'm asking this, is because.
Palm Beach is the vice chair, I thought.
Yeah, yeah, cause he's the one that ran at FAC.
They both have, uh, put their name back and they had to be considered.
Oh, they have?
Yes.
Is there any of the seats that's not being considered?
The only other ones that, tha- they have, uh, three, three, uh, not just executive committee, they also have at large.
Yeah.
But we're already on the board, so I don't know, I don't know what that large would do for us, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and Chris Constance from Charlotte County, he, he's good.
He is.
I believe the vice chair, he's the doctor from down there.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Remember, he's, he, he spoke at a workshop down there over there.
What I'm saying is.
He's the chair.
What I'm saying, this, this.
Okay, he's not from Palm, I thought he was from.
No, he's from Charlotte County.
Okay.
This, wh- why I'm getting where I'm getting at.
Okay, it looks like the vice chair is vacant and Jack, Jack Mariano from Pasco County is a treasurer.
Jack Mariano?
Mariano, thank you, sir.
Executive position.
David Edwards at large, there's an at large vacant, Paul Mixon, uh, is a large Okaloosa, Robert Carroll's another at large, he's from Big.
He's in Palm Beach, yeah.
Okay, they've got it covered then?
It seems that way, well.
Okay.
So we don't need them?
It looks like the vice chair is vacant, um, it looks like, but.
What, what I'm saying, the reason why I'm saying is the original eight counties, that was Okaloosa, Walton and all of that. Have we ever had anybody that was in the executive part of it, I mean, the.
You know more than I do about that.
Now, I don't remember, except for.
There hadn't been since I've been here.
For Warren Jaeger.
Not since I've been here.
And that's what I'm saying, we need a present in it, and I'm trying to get some presents in it.
Well, let me find out, I'll bring it back to you next week.
Yeah, do that, and then we'll, we'll make a six, y'all see where I'm going.
Time for that.
When did he say he wants?
I know it's time sensitive, cause that's the reason they sent it out.
Can we do it tentative? Or contingent?
I didn't see in the email where he says he needs to by a certain date, so.
Well, since, since none of us has ever served there, I mean, Commissioner, you wanting to serve as secretary of treasurer, is that what you want?
No, 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 no.
I'm trying to find out what we're doing here.
Time, January seventeenth.
Okay, let, let him find out all the particulars and then bring that back, because like I said, this, this consortium had been going on since two thousand ten.
Mm-hmm.
Two thousand ten.
Right, for executive committee.
We need to make sure that some of the original eight counties are still represented in the twenty-three counties.
That's true.
You see what I'm saying?
Vacancies.
And, and that's what I'm, that's how I'm saying it.
Okay. So you'll bring that back to next week.
Vacants for the executive committee vacancies, I will.
Yep, okay.
Okay, uh, oh, I'm sorry, do we vote? Can I move on?
Yeah, there, there was no motion.
Correct, you voted on the last motion, but there was no motion regarding.
For the executive committee, okay, cool. Um, item six, um, uh, by now y'all know that, um, Mr. Collins is now a big boss, uh, Danny Collins. And, um, there's a new gentleman, Mrs. Scott Mixon, uh, there's a meeting later this week with the chairman, myself, Mary Swope and him. It's actually gonna, it's changed from a Zoom to in-person meeting, and then he'll be, he'll come in front of his board sometime in January.
He's from Perry.
Yes, from Perry, him and his family, um, Perry.
Yeah, I know, he's a good guy.
Um, the ads, the. The times missed, the ads to go on to the next item for both the, um, the activities coordinator for the senior center and for the vacant TDC seat that um, would be created, so they're gonna run, so those application days are gonna be a couple of weeks, uh, they, I extended the, the application deadline a couple of weeks, so it'll be a little longer getting those in place. Um, your conference calendar is right there, so you can start planning your schedule for twenty twenty-five. Uh, and let's see, uh, uh, I attached the ballpoint management plan requested by Commissioner Sanders, that's there for, for your viewing. Um, and ten is if you guys want to talk about the, the conference, what was good, what was bad, what was crazy.
Oh, I got a lot of stuff, Ms. Erin wasn't here today, so I'll give it, give it to her, but we got some stuff. Remember I told her I was gonna come back with names and stuff?
I got the same stuff, yes. I'll just let him give you the stuff.
So, talk to Nationwide, uh, they, they want to discuss with her, I guess that some point we could bring back different stuff with, I think we already do deferred compensation, because Commissioner Crumbs already doing it. Uh, but about the other insurance solutions they might have, especially as we continue to have discussions about the employees at Wings. Uh, so I got that information from Ms. Erin, I also got some information from Ms. Roddenberry from FAC about the Florida local government finance program. Uh, what was interesting, they said on their slide that they had a way to do, uh, short-term or either, or either bonds for healthcare facilities. Uh, and then I got some information from one of the, uh, people that submit, that, uh, did a presentation to the commissioners that were attending the conference about a, uh, a type of healthcare insurance for families of those that are incarcerated. That's something new and it seemed to be, I mean, if it's like they say it is, it's gonna be great. Uh, but I wanna make sure that Ms. Erin gets all the information. And then there's a young lady I talked with, Katie Smith, has a company called Grant Works. I was specifically looking at because what Commissioner Amison brought up about the, some of the solutions for grant writing assistance or grant writing help, so I, I have all this information to give to you.
Christmas for Erin, okay, cool.
Yeah.
And, uh, the last item, I'll put an update on my report for the public, that our next meeting will be January seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine AM.
Yep, Mr. Morone, I know we're past noon, but I need to ask a question. So reading through the three hundred and sixty-something pages of this ballpoint management plan?
Mm-hmm.
It says in that plan, in three or four different areas, that they are looking at partnering with Franklin County to provide a boat ramp at Leonard's Landing.
Commissioner, you remember we went, we went down to that meeting with?
That's what's in their plan though.
That's what.
That's a lot.
So, when are they gonna start putting the ramp in? I'm good with it.
Well, that's it.
I think we're all good with it.
I guess you and I could set up a meeting with them and.
We need to do that, sir. Because that's what's included in their plan.
When you do, please, please contact me, because I know, I know a lot about that management.
Commissioner, I'm fine if you wanna meet with them.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 you can do it, it don't matter. But we need to call them on the carpet about that boat ramp.
It's in their plan, it's in their plan.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I don't understand. They're approving all these other docks and stuff and all this, but anytime Franklin County has asked for a boat ramp down there at Alligator Point, they won't do it.
We get crickets.
Just like we had Mr. Taylor at the last meeting, we need a boat ramp. I know they need a boat ramp.
Yeah.
But we can't give it to them until DEP says we can give it to them. But yet, they don't mind, uh, uh, putting docks out there two thousand feet.
Makes no sense, makes no sense.
You know, two thousand four feet. I'm just saying, anyway, it's a mess.
Yeah, and so our next meeting date's gonna be Tuesday, January seventh?
Mm-hmm, nine AM.
And I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate my fellow board respecting my work schedule. And I, just soon as I find out something, I'll let you guys know, so we can maybe change it sooner or later.
Yeah, we can't solve one problem by creating another one, Commissioner.
Yeah.
It's not what we're trying to do.
We all in here together.
Yeah.
Commissioner, nothing else, I, I, I'm now, I, I know that I'll be talking to you again, but publicly I'll wish you all, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, cause we don't meet again until January officially.
Alright, anything else from Mr. Morone before we switch to Attorney Schuler? Attorney Schuler, I do wanna ask you something, I know you don't be ready for it right now, but maybe at a future meeting you could be. Uh, going on what Mr. Morone has just had in his report about delayed advertisements, could you please at some point provide this board through an email, the information on what it would take for us to actually start to notice our notices differently, that's legal? So we're not held up again because the paper failed to run something? Just so we can know what's legal and what action we could take. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
I'm glad you said that, because now, a lot of places are just using like your.
Electronic.
Your, your electronics.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nobody gets a paper anymore.
Alright.
That's right.
Alright, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, item number one, the public hearing we've already handled. Uh, actually, item number two, I'm requesting permission from the board to schedule a public hearing for the purpose of rescinding the ordinance that created the burn ban in Saint James Lannard Village Fire District. Uh, it is my expectation that, uh, you would authorize that public hearing to occur January the seventh. And between now and that time, I will have finalized all the details in the contract between this board and the Saint James Lannard Village Volunteer Fire Department, so those two mesh together.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I move for, uh, Attorney Schuler to be able to schedule a public hearing on, uh, ordinance lifting the burn ban for Lannard Village, Saint James.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion in the affirmative by Commissioner Sanders and it's seconded by Commissioner Ward to schedule this public hearing. Any additional discussion before we vote?
Just a question, do you think this would be a contentious public hearing? Uh, do you, okay.
Mm-mm, yes.
I don't think so, do you?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Is it, do you, did, did we think it was gonna be contentious, you know, the public?
Wouldn't think so.
No, I think they're all coming together.
This burn ban.
They all want it.
They all want it.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just more linger on the, the timeframe of it, you know, if it was gonna be something that was gonna be a major issue, we might.
Well, it's getting cold weather and everybody's wanting their little.
A little fire pitch.
Little fire pitch, and they can't have them and, oh. But the fire department says they think they're ready, or they feel like they're ready.
It was chilly seventy-seven degrees yesterday, for heaven's sake.
I know, I was out there.
Swatting mosquitoes.
Alright, any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's a five oh vote.
Item number three is the airport hangar lease termination agreement, uh, Mr. Randall Terry, uh, agreed with and executed the document that I prepared as I submitted it to him. Uh, I now have that original that came back in the mail and, um, asking for board authorization for the chairman to execute that hangar termination lease agreement, uh, on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second from Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Actually, item number four is the MOU between Franklin County and the Riverkeeper regarding the dredge spoil material and the county's access and use of that, uh, material. Um, I have included a, a red line document in my report, but I also have a, a finished agreement here. Uh, I've, since I submitted my report, I've heard back from Mr. Ken Jones. He's reported to me that he has no objection to the document as I have revised it. Uh, he has also sent me a follow-on email that he spoke with, I believe her name's Susan Anderson, the person who will be executing, yes, Susan Anderson, the executive director, and she has indicated to him, and he's emailed me that she has no objection. So in form, I understand that this MOU is a consent agreement and I recommend it to you as submitted.
Right, and, and Attorney Schuler, this, this memorandum would basically give Franklin County the right of first refusal to that spoil, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a win-win, because one of the things that's come up as we've had different meetings, not with just the Riverkeeper, but with other people that are involved in this ACF system, their, their complaint has been that because the Corps, the Corps done dredging, but then they put the spoil on the bank and over time it just goes back into the river.
Yeah.
So this is gonna help alleviate some of those issues that they're bringing up. If, if we're ensuring that we're able to move that sand, it doesn't just stay there, we also get the public benefit that now we have material that we can use, that it's at no cost to the public, other than the cost of obtaining it or acquiring.
Transportation, no.
Right, the transportation.
The cost of loading it and hauling it all.
Right, right.
And that, tha- that is you pointed out, and I, I can go into as much detail as you like, but the, the spoil area is on state-owned lands.
Yes.
The Riverkeeper is responsible for making sure that we have access to that spoil. Uh, we do have right of first refusal, but it's not our discretion i- if Mr. Howard or someone from the county goes to that site and decides there's, there's too much mud or there's too many tree stumps, or it's not suitable for our purposes, to whatever extent there's a volume there not used by the county, then the Riverkeeper is financially responsible for hauling that off.
Right, they have to, they have to clear it all.
Responsible for permitting, they're responsible for ho- you know, identifying and holding the county harmless in the event there are any permit violations. Uh, but not that we're expecting any of that, but just, you know, we, we could protect the county at all costs, correct, Commissioner?
Well, that, that, yes, sir, and that's the final and most beneficial part of it all though. So if the, if the, the, in the past, the complaint has been that the material was just left and it winds up back in the river anyway, through this MOU, either the county or the Riverkeeper is gonna be moving it. It's not gonna be there. So I think that's, in the end, that, the finality of it all is gonna make a difference.
Right, and, and this is not actually not being, the, the spoil is not being stored, uh, you know, along the riverbank, it's going to be a, a staging area on Pull Hammock Road off State Road sixty-five, just south of Grand Creek in Franklin County.
Right, yeah, but had we not entered this agreement, they probably were gonna be trying to ask Corps to allow them just to put it on the bank beside where they were dredging.
Very good point.
That's been historically what's happened.
That is correct.
Alright, so we already had a, any action on this far as motioning from the board?
I was talking, not writing notes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to catch up, I talk too much too. So what's the pleasure of the board?[1794.94]
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Amerson? Second from Commissioner Kuhn. Any additional discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, Commissioners, the, uh, fifth and final action item on my report for your consideration regards the pool house at eight forty-one West Bay Shore Drive, Saint George Island. At the last meeting, the board had essentially asked me for path forward or different options for the board to consider. Uh, and I, I think that request or direction to me from the board was because of allegations of, uh, you know, an alleged violation of the stop work order that the board had placed back in June of last year. I have, uh, put five different options here for the board. I, I won't go through and read every one of them. They're all self-explanatory. But I would want to flesh out a little bit on a, if the board were to, um, want to go to court on a declaratory and injunctive action, that would be item number D or, or letter D. Um, I just wanted to flesh out, when I said request judicial guidance on how to proceed, it would be whether or not the landowner is or is not in, in violation of the stop work order. And if he is, then for the court to issue an injunction that he ceased violating the stop work order. But other than that, I don't have any further comment. I'll open the, the floor up for discussion by the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start out. Um, I've mulled over this and, you know, my thing is, is we have in the black and white that no accessory structure permit shall be issued until the principal structure is completed. However, previous practice stated that the, uh, secondary, the, uh, secondary structure permit could be, uh, per, uh, issued. So my predicament and my, um, conundrum is who's to say, you know, he did get that second permit? I don't like the fact that he had a stop work order and continued to work. I feel like that's a slap in the face to this board. So, um, but in a court of law, you know, how does that look like? We gave him the permit, even though we went on, looks like we went against our own. And then again, nothing against staff, they were going by what they practiced, you know, their practices in the past. But, you know, I, I just don't want to get the county, I don't know, I, I just, I don't think it's gonna hurt just to see, just to see what the declar- declaratory judgment shows. But, um, it's your district, Chairman, and I, I told Attorney Schuler on the phone yesterday that I think whatever you decide, I'll fully support a hundred percent.
So I, I'm with either C or D. Uh, so we have a magistrate hired. We're either gonna use him or we're not. So if it's gonna truly be a code enforcement thing, do we want to send it to a magistrate? Or do we want to have a judge tell us kind of how to go from there? Because we do have an issue where it has happened in the past. And that's been said more than just today. Uh, I will say, in my discussions with staff post all this happening, and you, you're correct, Commissioner, the current property owner has been a bad actor. They've continued to do things i- in, regardless of what they've been told. Uh, we've even had our code enforcement, which is the sheriff office, go out and tell them, hey, you know, you're not supposed to be working, and he continued to work while the officer was leaving. Uh, so that, that is true. But with all that being said, one of the things I've talked with staff about and Mr. Steve Patterson, our building official, is, so, and I don't want to get away from this, but it is part of this discussion. So when we hired Ms. Alora Veteran Mills, we hired her for several things. One of them was to help walk us through the ability to, uh, potentially create a PUD-enabling ordinance for our books to be in our, our zoning code. The other thing is this idea of creating a special district, zoning district for Saint George Island. And we've talked about clerking lots, we've talked about the types of fill or some kind of fill ordinance, the, making sure that we have a clear and concise and declaratory language to the height restriction and how it's measured. The other thing I would like to see and let, and, and I know we're way ahead of this, is for us as a board to consider not allowing any more of these kinds of structures on Saint George Island where they're gonna be turned into a rental unit. You can have one house, uh, if you need a mother-in-law suite, it's not gonna be on the island in the future. Uh, you know, unless you're gonna attach it to the house, then that, that's a whole nother thing. Uh, but ju- ju- that's, again, that's part of this. Just to give some direction to the board on my thoughts on the process, but, you know, today I'm fine with either C, uh, C or D. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know that it's gonna get us anywhere to, uh, just let it all go, you know, and change it going forward. I don't know it's gonna get us anywhere to try to say, well, we legally issued you the permit. Either way, that, either way, that's gonna wind up at D. That's gonna wind up before a judge. And declaratory judgment is, in my mind, in talking with Attorney Schuler, not as nearly a lengthy process or a costly process as just letting it play out and seeing where it winds up in court.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want me to go ahead? Okay, let me ask you something, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, ma'am.
You got E, such other action is determined by the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a way, because I'm like, I'm like Jessica and Ricky because we're the three. Okay, is there a way that the county commission can say, we will not allow you to have a CO on that pool house until you've had that primary house CO certificate in your hand? Is there a way you can do that?
The building official has, has told me as much, and I think he's told you all as well.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Meeting that, at this point, allegedly, I mean, there, there's work being done on the pool house in violation of the stop work order, none of which is being inspected, uh, in that he does not intend to issue a CO on a structure that hasn't been, hasn't had the, the legally required inspections. That's the way I understand his position.
Well, it, it, Mr. Chairman, that's what I was gonna say as well. With speaking with staff, the, the way we could approach this is just not have any more inspections done on the secondary structure until he has a CO for his primary instru- uh, structure, then go back and start the inspection process from there.
But, Mr. Chairman, my concern with that is, and I again discussed that with Steve and some other county staff, problem with that, it don't matter CO or not, he's already gone above and beyond and, and worked on this house or this, I'm sorry, secondary structure pool house with a stop work order. Who's to say he's still not gonna allow people in the, in there? I mean, he's gonna have it built. What is a CO gonna matter if he still can allow people in the house, right, or in the pool house?
He cannot, um, occupy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but who's gonna enforce it? Who's gonna go in there and say?
That's when the state kicks in. That's, there's a difference between our zoning rules and, and, and the state, uh, a bit, uh, Florida State Building Code rules, that occupation or billing without a CO, there's a problem with that and, and he won't get permanent power either.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. You should be able to get permanent power to it. So that, I think that would probably be our best approach, given it, the circumstance that we're in. But, uh, back to the, the stop work order, and this is again hearsay. But I think, uh, all, all they did, the construction that we was looking at that was continuing, is they just put a, a roof over what they already had done. That way it didn't anything rot or anything like that where
Yeah, they've been working on it.
Now, I, I did ride by there myself and it looks to me like that. Instead of two stories now, it's only one. But again, I hadn't had any conversation with the property owner or any conversation with the adjacent property owners, just visually what I was looking at, but.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Uh, Attorney Schuler, on option D's and David, historically, how long does that process usually take?
Well, I was going to address the, the chairman's comment, just, just not because they're inaccurate, but I just, y'all basically have the benefit of the same conversation. Litigation does not happen quickly. I mean, y'all know that just from your various life experiences, experiences, but what the chairman said was litigation as opposed to just letting this process, because, I mean, he, he could be, you know, who knows how long trying to complete these structures. But litigation, uh, I, I am subject to the court's schedule and their availability. Uh, so it's, it's not going to happen in the next three or four, six months. I mean, it's easily going to be, you know, six months and beyond, if, if not longer. I mean, the last litigation we had ran, what, seven years before it was finally dismissed?
Seven.
Yeah. And we, before that, we had about six or seven years of litigation with the Saint Joe Company on a, 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 a comprehensive plan year update.
Yep.
Uh, we've had multiple years of litigation with, um, the, with the Saint Joe Company on a Burt Harris act. So, I mean, it, it, it can run. But, um, you know, I, I, I think in terms of the expense, I mean, it doesn't cost the board anymore to send me to court than it costs you for me to come to this meeting. So, I mean, it's not like I'm billing by the hour. I mean, it's a flat fee, so however long I work, I work. And I'm, I'm perfectly good with that. But just want the board to know that the court's schedule is something that I am subject to. Uh, and there is certainly, uh, s- some merit to the, the CO issue that was being mentioned here to see how that plays out as well.
So this thing's, this thing could be, be completed in six months.
I'm sorry.
I said this, this, the structure could be completed in six months, and he's working on it, correct?
That's the allegation. I, I, I have no idea how much they, they have or have not done. I mean, they're not supposed to be working on that, in violation of the stop work order.
And you said no inspections have been done?
That's my understanding from the building administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. With, in terms of, uh, option number C, the magistrate, is the magistrate's job, he's gonna just rule if he's in violation of the stop work order or not based on our, uh, just the, the information that he's provided, right? So how different is that than getting the declaratory judgment? Is the magistrate, I guess his job is just a?
Uh, there is, in my estimation, a, 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 a significant difference between a magistrate's order, which is going to essentially result in a fine as opposed to a circuit judge's order, whi- which I've, I've done these mandatory injunctions and declaratory judgment actions, um, in the private part of my practice and successfully got the, the declaration in favor of the client and got the mandatory injunction issued. So those are enforceable, uh, and you, you can be put in jail if you violate them as opposed to a magistrate's order, which essentially is a, a lien on property. Um, and, you know, oftentimes, they're, they're never foreclosed on and enforced in that manner. The, the board, most local government entities just let the lien sit there until the properties either refinanced or sold and then y'all negotiate a payment to clear the lien. That, that's typically what happens. So, um, I, I would think a more, al- although more time-consuming and more effective remedy would be a circuit, you know, requesting a circuit judge's order as opposed to if, if the board chooses not to play out the, the certificate of, of the CO issue that, that y'all discussed here this morning and also with the building official.
So would it be, I'm trying to think of the correct way to say it, would it be incongruent to say that we could follow the, the process of making sure we don't CO it, so then the state law's gonna kick in and kind of assist us? But at the same time, move along the path of, of action item D? Or, or is, you know what I mean?
Is there a combination?
Would that be able to work together, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, we're, did you say the CO issue in combination with item D?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, that, that, that would be a, a dual option available to the board, I think.
Yeah, that way, uh, you know, he's either go- gonna do whatever he has to do to get a CO, which is not gonna be easy because it goes back to Florida Building Code. And he's gonna have to try to find somebody that's gonna put their license on the line for something they've not been able to inspect.
That's right.
Uh, versus waiting and finding out what a judge tells all of us we're gonna do with that situation.
Yeah, the, uh, yes, I mean, that, that's exactly correct. Someone's gonna have to put their license on the line to sign off on work that's been done in violation of the stop work order
Yes.
uh, and, and also to certify compliance with the building code. The only issue that comes even close to that in the county's experience was a house on Saint George Island. Um, and the county was always sort of cold, I guess we were adjacent to that issue, we, because they, they actually filed a claim against our building official for not properly inspecting and the, the contractor, the homeowner got into years of protracted litigations. And as part of that, they had to do deconstruction of, of the, the, the house on the island in order to try and prove or disprove these alleged D flat, D backs in the, the construction of the building. So, yeah, I mean, it's, uh, he's probably creating a lot of problems for himself, but.
That was gonna be my question. I mean, if, if he continues to work on it, obviously, I mean, it's been a while since I've built a house. And I know things have changed in twenty-something years. But, you know, you dry it in, they come out, they inspect and make sure the hurricane clips are, uh, is there. Then you go through your electrical phase and then it, once you close that wall off, if you haven't been signed off, you gotta tear that wall down to make sure the electrical's right. I'm just, that's why I was wanting to kind of ask Steve where, how far along, and I should have asked him sooner, how far along this gentleman is. He probably don't know because we obviously hadn't inspected anything.
Yeah, right.
Because he is in that first initial phase of construction. So I'm assuming that he hasn't had any electrical pull or any of that. So why, why can't we just not inspect until he has a CO with his primary?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
That, that is an option, Commissioner.
Yeah.
So his, his only other option would be go to a, what, a private inspector to go in, inspect it and him continue to do construction? And then, once upon, it, once he tries to get his CO then, if we have a discrepancy, then he has to do some, what, deconstruction and?
Well, my, my position is he needs to honor the stop work order and not
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm just.
He finishes the primary, uh, structure, then, you know, brings his inspections up to date and then works on the pool house as the accessory structure. I think that was what the board was intending is to sequence the, the primary first and then the accessory dwelling second.
Yes. So, uh, I want to clarify, so we're looking at potentially, if the board agrees, making a motion to kind of do both, to understand and, and with staff, we're gonna continue to direct staff to honor the stop work order in the, in the manner that we are not doing any inspections on this property. And there's no way he could potentially get a CO without finishing and completing and getting a CO on his primary structure. And then he's gonna have to deal with whatever calls for it, to have to deal with that. But at, at the same time, move forward on, on, uh, using you, Attorney Schuler, to do whatever we have to do to seek a declaratory judgment from a court of law about this process. Is that, that, is that correct summarization of what we discussed?
I think that, yeah, pretty much sums it up. Um, and as long as everybody's okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Can I just ask, just so I could, because I have to relay this back to Steve. What, what is a judgment, the, the judgment going to say? What, what, what are we trying to accomplish with a judge, is my question?
It, it, it depends on what the judge says. So, I'm not a judge.
Yeah.
But, uh, he did receive a permit in good faith from the county. But we also have in our zoning code that you can't have an accessory until you have a primary. And he's started working on his, on his accessory first. And we, as a board, took action to tell him to stop that work because it's incongruent with our zoning code and he's continued to do it. So is the judge gonna tell him that, you know, what is gonna be, is there gonna be a penalty for his continuing to go opposite the zoning code when he's had a clear discussion from, from the county staff and the board?
Yes.
You know what I mean? What, that's up to a judge to decide.
So that's what we're asking the judge about from when the stop
That's what I perceive, yes.
When the stop work order was issued, what happened after that?
Right.
Yes.
Right. Is it gonna be made, you know, all, all the options of whatever the law applies or where the judge determines
Yes.
is the, the direction we're all gonna move in, the board, the property owner, and all of it?
Yes, yes. I, I was just trying to understand what we're actually going to court about. Is it about the, it's about the stop work order that we issue, that he continue to do whatever work for whatever reason?
Yes.
Not even reaching back out to the county and saying, hey, he, here's my problem, you know, and ki- kind of working it out. Okay, that's cool.
Yeah, because even, so even though he received a permit, it's still opposite our zoning code, what's written, as the commissioner said, for you to have an accessory structure on your property
Yeah.
without a primary. And yes, he had a permit for a primary, but he's not working on the primary, he's working, working on the accessory.
Yes, I got it.
So we tried to stop that work and he's continued to work. So, yeah.
Yeah, the primary, yes, okay, I got it.
Okay. Any additional discussion before we vote? We did have a motion by Commissioner Ward with a second from Commissioner Sanders. Seeing there more, further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. It's up to you.
Uh, the other item was a discussion in possible action, item number six. Uh, this regards the Badcock Building in East Point, Florida is, is vacant. The chairman, uh, came to me and asked the process about, you know, potentially using that, uh, or purchasing that property using TDC funds. Um, and so I'm bringing this back to the board. Um, and so I'm bringing this back to the board now concerning that, that item and this board discussion, are y'all interested in proceeding with the potential purchase of that Badcock Building using TDC funds or other funds? And, and if you are interested in that process, I would need authorization to order a couple of appraisals. So the chairman, he probably has more to flesh out than, than that, that...
That's fine. So yeah, just to clarify, so I, I think the property owner really wasn't going to sell the property. But, uh, the agent he has mentioned to me, well, you know, does the county have need for any property? Because of the size of the building, where it's located, the, the way it's constructed, it's all a, a drop ceiling, so none of the walls inside are permanent, everything can be moved. Uh, it is a nice location, but the, the end result is, if this board wanted to, we could pursue. And it's gonna require, a- as Attorney Shuler said, two appraisals, uh, taking the, what is the, the, uh, uh, summary of those two appraisals, like the, the... What, what's the word I'm looking for, Michael? I'm sorry. With the two appraisals, there's a, the middle ground in between the two?
Well, that, that's up for discussion, wi- it, it could be, you know, if they were to agree to the low end. So I'm, I'm expecting there's going to be a difference in the number between the two appraisals. So you can average the two together, we've done that in the past. They, they may want to say, "Well, no, we, we just want to go with the, the highest value."
Right.
That, that would be, you know, fairly anticipated.
Right.
It's a matter of negotiation. Bottom line is, you can't go above the, the, your highest appraised value.
Right, right. So in any event, the, the opportunity before us, if the board wanted to do it, is with the purchase of, actually, we would actually have to also have a public hearing to amend the TDC spending plan, I would think, to include this, 'cause it does not, it's not currently included. Uh, but it would give us the opportunity to have a convention slash event center in East Point, and that's what, that's what it would be. Uh, it's twelve thousand square feet, so there's plenty of room. Uh, but, you know, that's, that's a pleasure to the board. So before we start trying to order appraisals, or kinda work out any kinda deal, which may or may not be completed, does the board have any interest in pursuing that? If not, we, you know what I mean, we, that's what we need to know today.
Mr. Chairman, my question was what we need it for, what, what we use it for.
Just like a convention center slash event center, uh, there's not really a whole lot in East Point other than restaurants and, you know what I mean, and just, just regular businesses. Restaurants and dollar stores and, you know, there's not re- growing up in East Point, we actually had a community center years ago. You know, so, that kinda deal.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm okay with it, but I was kinda thinking we might could use it, but if, uh, since you said TDC funds, I was thinking, you know, I've been kinda hoping that we could get someplace for some of the constitutional officers have expressed interest of getting out of the courthouse.
Yes.
So I was hoping that maybe we could, we could do that, but if it's TDC funds, that's not gonna be able, they're not gonna be able to do it that way.
No, and I'm one of, I'm one of the constitutional officers around that EOC building, the new EOC building. And i- if they wanted to go there, you know?
I don't...
If they wanted to go there, but anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see a reason why getting two appraisals will hurt, right? I mean...
That's, it's a pleasure to the board, that's why we wanted to make sure that you guys were, I mean, the board needs to make the decision, not just a...
Chair, I got a question for you.
We can't come back and yell with numbers, say, "Here's what we got, y'all wanna vote yes or no?" You know what I mean?
With this, you know, I guess a lot of people use the East Point firehouse.
Yes.
Did they rent that?
Mm-hmm.
Or did they just, so could we?
Yes.
Do the same thing?
Yes.
If we use TDC funds?
And we could also include it on the website that we have for people trying to secure the armory for dates and times.
Yeah.
We could do the same thing with that, just add it on as another event center slash convention center.
Can we do that, though, if we use TDC funds?
Yeah, that was my question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we use TDC funds to purchase it, though? That's the...
I guess if you make it into a museum.
Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we're used, as long as this board...
It has to be a museum, though, I mean, we can't just...
No, no, as long as this board agrees to make a purchase for things that are in the statute, and that we're doing it for the purpose of promoting tourism in Franklin County, and, and moving that along, or something that the tourist development council could promote for Franklin County, then yes, we are, we are okay with that. 'Cause the statute puts the onus on this board to make that legislative finding, that this is what we're doing with the money, and this is why we're doing it.
So ha- have we thought about, okay, when it's not rented out, and just sitting there, what are we using for, like? Have we thought about that yet?
No, but I'm, I'm sure there's other, there's useful could happen, as long as they fit within the use that we determine.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just not to interrupt you, Commissioner Kroom, but the con- the visitor center that's currently in East Point now, used to be the old Florida Highway Patrol Station. Are they potentially maybe looking at moving that to, no?
You can't do that. According to statute, you couldn't do it.
Can I use it for a visitor center, or TDC admin office, or, yeah, you can't use TDC funds for that? That would have to come out of ad valorem funds.
Right.
Just asking, I didn't know.
Yeah.
It's, when we, but, I'm sorry, we've actually done that once before, where you have a blending of TDC funds and ad valorem funds, and that's Lamarve's.
Yeah.
Uh, that was purchased in part with TDC funds and also with ad valorem.
Now, it, just for a discussion, if we did proceed with it, we're able to purchase it, and we want to put a visitor center there, we would have to fund it from ad valorem, correct?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we would have to, if the county would have to use ad valorem to refund?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you know, for that space.
Yes.
Pro rata. It would have to be a pro rata.
Yes, so I, I, I...
Yeah. It, it's just, so in the statute, it's, it's really odd, Commissioner Ward. In the statute, it allows for a lot of things for visitor center, but not for the construction of a visitor center. That's why we're saying it's a no.
Yeah, you kinda...
It allows for the, 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 you know, uh, the monies to operate it with.
Yeah, to kinda acquire it with, with...
Right, right, with TDC funds.
That statute makes no sense to me.
Another thing, too, is you got a county that has a population of, what, ten thousand? And we got, how many visitor centers have we keep putting? I mean, we can't have a visitor center on every block. And I mean, if I'm sitting there from a state perspective going, you know, that, that's just something I was thinking whenever y'all were talking about visitor centers. But, uh, but now, you know, another thing, too, we gotta kinda keep in mind, and, uh, I'm not against anything, I'm just open for discussion, but we sit here and we beat up on the state, federal government, about buying up, you know, prime property. We're talking about taking a pretty good piece of commercial property, that's a prime piece of real estate, and it would come off the tax roll well.
We're living on seven percent.
Yeah, I know.
There's only seven percent available to anybody here. Yeah, that's, that's...
I'm just saying, just kinda keep in mind, moving forward, that...
But I'm fine with either way. I just, there's no sense in us continuing to have a discussion with the property owner if the board doesn't support it, you know what I'm saying?
Is the property owner actually in the discussion, or is it just the agent?
The property owner, too. We, we met with the property owner, yes.
And is Chris Wise still the owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Chris and Stormy Wise, yes, ma'am.
I have, I mean, I've had mixed feelings about it, but, um, I would rather see, I'm like Otis on this, I'd rather see a business in there. Um, but I know there may not be no businesses to come in there.
And, and, please, I, I mean, I, I look at East Point like our last frontier, you know, I mean, they've, we have nothing on this side of the river.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be looked at.
East Point, no, what I'm saying is, they're our, they're our last, uh, little festival of, of, uh, job growth. I mean, I'm not gonna be able to put in anything in my district that's gonna create any jobs out there, and don't have the real estate for it.
Don't blame you guys.
East Point, you know, huh?
Yeah, you do.
Tell me.
You got all down, uh, Two Mile, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of property that used to have businesses that don't.
Seafood zones, seafood, but, but what I'm getting at is...
Businesses.
Is, uh, you know, you can put in, I mean, it, I'm, I'm just throwing things out there with that particular area of East Point right there. Um, and, and, and just hear me out, you know, a, a business who come in there, uh, like Badcock once was, not saying a furniture business, but another business, and how many employees could they employ? You know, and I don't wanna take that potential away by it being a prime piece of commercial real estate right there, you know, and, and that's another thing all to itself. You have a, a potential venue right in the middle of a, uh, let's see, let me just try to think. You got wind supply, you got, you know, all this commercial stuff, a dollar store across the road. You know what I mean? Would it, how appealing would it be, uh, as, as a venue?
Yeah.
I mean, just little things like that, just what's going on.
But then you look again, look again, 'cause we've been discussing about East Point. Then you look again, right across from that catty corner to it is the, um, old nursing home that was there. Nobody, they bought that property and made anything out of it. Nobody's ever went up to the station that we approved for many years ago.
That was before Michael.
It's, it's slowly growing, you know, growing outside, I mean...
Yeah, that's meanwhile, you know, the board, like, like I said, four years ago, deemed it as a commercial hub of Franklin County, because it is Franklin County. It's our own city, it's Franklin County. I'm hoping one day we'll live long enough to see, only as a city, maybe, uh...
You might, it's gotta get a lot more, uh, investment in it first, but...
But that's what I'm saying, East Point, and, and pres- while at the same time preserving it, you know?
Oh, so, yeah, it's, it's just the pleasure of the board, though. What, uh, the only thing we wanted to do today, and the reason why we have it on agenda, is if the board wants to pursue it, let's pursue it. If y'all don't, we can tell the property owner that we're not interested. That's all we're trying to decide today. So instead of him just asking for the ability, you know what I mean? 'Cause yes, this is possible action, but it's more discussion. You know, if y'all are good with it, that's fine, if you're not, that's fine.
Question on the, the appraisals, we have to get two, that comes out of what, professional services that we pay for?
I think that's what Aaron would take down.
And, and, uh, appraisals are what, thousands of dollars?
A couple thousand apiece, I think, wasn't it, last time we did it?
I think so, yes.
And, um, I, I mean, he's, I don't, I don't know if you wanna go into detail how much you know he owed, or how much he's asking for it, or how much it's gonna...
Uh, no, I, well, the original discussion he had was, was a little bit more than what I, and I, I told him I didn't think that the appraisals would come in at that.
That's my question, like, if we pay for these appraisals and they come in way lower, then it's a mute point anyway.
Yeah.
So, will, will it hurt in the grand scheme of things to pay for the, to get the two appraisals, just to see? But then I don't wanna waste taxpayer money either, you know?
It, it depends on whether the board has an appetite to pursue putting that kind of venue in East Point or not. And again, it doesn't, it's completely up to the board. But yes, there, there is no, so even if you decide yesterday, our feet are not fixed and it's not a done deal, 'cause you have to do two appraisals, then the property owner's gonna have to agree to the, to the number that comes out of the appraisals, you know what I mean? So you, you're not by any means fixing the, fixing our feet today.
Yeah.
But, you know, you don't, true, you don't, so...
I don't know what...
But we do need it by motion and vote, so we can know what to tell the property owner.
Wish I could move it.
That, you and every other Realtor on the planet wishes they could move stuff, I assure you.
Commissioner, maybe, maybe what you do, you, if, if you say, you guys wanna think about it some more, uh, you know, we go back and let him put it on an open market, and maybe he needs to figure out that what he's asking for, it's probably not going to happen, and then we revisit it at that time, if there's a lower asking price. If you're, eh, I'm, I'm seeing, we're not sure we wanna think about it faces, is what I'm seeing here.
Yeah, I just don't wanna waste money.
Yeah, I, I got you.
You know, 'cause if he, they come back low, then that's waste of money, in my book, and it's a mute point at that point.
Well, there's, there's not been a, there's not been any communication with us about, if it doesn't come back here, I'm not doing it anyway. He's not, the owner has not communicated that.
So, so he is negotiable, depending upon the presence of, but...
But again, if, if, if the board doesn't have any desire to pursue that, then there's no sense. We just need to be able to tell the property owner what we're intending to do.
But it's, it's on the market now, though, I mean...
No, it's not on the market.
Oh, it's not on the market.
No, so he has held it off the market, as he's been discussing with the county. No, it is not on the market.
I think the one in Port Saint Joe is, right?
I, I would...
One in Port Saint Joe already sold.
I would, uh, what is it?
One point five.
Uh, I, me personally, I'd like to have a little time to discuss this with some people that, that, you know, um, and, and think about it, I mean, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying, yeah. Uh, you know, I mean, I want, I wanna see stuff for East Point, I do.
So maybe, are you, are you comfortable doing this, then? We will ask the property owner to consider us taking this up at our first meeting in January.
That'd be perfect.
Okay, we'll do that, and we'll see what the property owner wants to do, is that okay, Attorney Shuler?
Yes.
Okay, but we can do that without a motion and vote, correct?
Yeah, you're just gonna have a further discussion, bring it back to the board, it's not taking any action.
All right, sounds good. All right, we're still on you.
That's the last discussion item that I have. I have some information items, if the board wants to go over that.
Oh, yeah.
Res- resolve the, uh, the issue with the fuel farm out at the airport, um...
All right.
Ah, the barnacle parking enforcement contract, I'll be bringing that back to the board for official action at your next board meeting. Uh, the, the last outstanding item with Barnacle, if you'll remember, is they had, you know, planted their flag and decided to die in the hill of unlimited potential liability to the county for basically, you know, fraud and things of that nature. They now come back and said they're willing to have the entire contract for all potential issues of liability for the county capped at fifty thousand dollars, which I had recommended to you, uh, for the other, uh, items to be capped at fifty thousand dollars. So looks like we're going to reach a, a consensus and agreement on that. Uh, then, in items nine and ten, I'm just including copies of some letters that I sent out to some property owners. Um, one involves the item that Aaron brought up about the dune walkover on her report. Um, we don't need to wait on the property owner, that driveway that he's using is already on county property. From the aerial photograph, it looks like it's unimproved, it's just a dirt, uh, driveway to enter his property. So just go ahead and move forward and do the county's project, and not slow down waiting on that particular owner at, uh, seven, seven, two East Gory Drive.
All right. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Shuler?
Uh, Mr. Shuler?
Yes, ma'am.
I've been dealing with a situation out at my aunt with a gentleman, and I have already called Howard Neighbors out there to it, that has some pine trees in the county ride of way. Now, according to what Howard Neighbors said, these are good, healthy pine trees, there's nothing wrong. But that, that, um, property owner had now wrote myself and the chairman a letter, and now he's wanting to know if we have a trained arborist in the, in there, or a forester that does assessments and recommendations. He wants the trees out there, and they're no harm. So if you don't mind, can you take this letter and respond to him, please? Because we're not gonna go around cutting trees off, off the, off the ride of ways, just because somebody don't want them there. They got to, I mean, they're, they're there for a purpose, also. And also, one more item that I'm...
They're wanting us to cut them off of our ride of way?
Yes.
Yeah, he wants us to cut them all down. But anyway, one more item, you do have another informational item that you have not brought to the board.
Uh-oh.
You know what that is? You got a brand-new grandbaby boy.
Yes, I do.
Now, how about that? He's got a grandson.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Tell him his name.
Little Michael?
His name?
Little Michael.
Little Michael?
T-Mi, no. No, uh, his name, Harrison Fisher May. And yes, we're very proud to have the addition to the family, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Especially here at Christmas time, you know? That's precious.
Thank you very much, yeah, we were, I was personally kinda holding out to December fifteenth, uh, for the birthday, because that's my dad's birthday, but about a week before that.
Yeah.
I'll be down.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I've got something not to, you know, take away from the nice news there, but, um, a derelict boat.
Hold another note.
Do we, how do we deal with a derelict boat? There's a, there's a boat in my district that, okay, so is it, does it matter if it is t- uh, moored to property?
Yes.
Okay, so how does that work? 'Cause I was told, 'cause I've already asked, if a boat's in the water, it's FWC or Coast Guard territory or, or purview jurisdiction, but if it's tied or moored to property, private property, how does that, how does that work? 'Cause it, it's not FWC at that point, if it's moored, right?
Is it in the water?
Yes.
Then it's FWC.
But if it's moored to somebody's property?
If it's moored, that means it's not a derelict boat, uh, boat according to FWC.
Tied, tied, moored, whatever you call it.
It, it, they had told me before...
Yes, it's, it's sunk.
Unless they've changed, unless they've changed, they told me before, when I first got on the commission, we had boats in the East Point Channel, they were sitting on the bottom, and still had a rope tied to a pole, and they said it was not a derelict vessel.
Things, things have changed, the, the governor has took a strong stance on that.
Good.
If y'all remember, uh, FWC removed that derelict vessel out at... If y'all remember, uh, FWC removed that derelict vessel out at, uh, Abercrombie, and, and remember they had tore the, the ramp up?
Mm.
With the, where the contractor did.
Right.
And, and all the nails and stuff, remember Howard was hitting here? Um, that's almost been, what, a year ago, or better?
Yeah, that's right.
But, no, they, they took a mu- the states took a much stronger stance with derelict vessels than, than what, and I know what you're talking about, 'cause I, I dug up three shrimp boats right down there for the city, uh, years ago, um, when we was leasing a dock, and, and I had to go through a, a tremendous amount of.
Work.
Hassle to go get all that stuff registered in my name and everything else like that, but, but no, they, it's, it's a lot different in the answer, Commissioner Ward, it depends on, uh, the only, I think the only thing that's, that differentiates whose jurisdiction it is, is if it's a navigable channel, that it's potentially, yeah.
I don't know about that.
I think that's when the Coast Guard comes into play, but I tell you what, Mr. Kramer will be in town tomorrow at some point, uh, because we have a partnership meeting that FWC be present with, that'd be a good question for him.
I'll, I'll reach out to him, 'cause, 'cause it's basically halfway sunk, it's not completely sunk, and you probably don't know which one I'm talking about, it's with the last storm, what was it, Helene? So, what's the last storm we had? There's, it, it kinda with the past few storms, it keeps going under and under and under, and it's, the glass is blown out now, and it, and I just don't want any kind of, uh, seepage into the bay if, if it hasn't already, so that's why I was asking, but anyway.
Well, Mr. Rona, did they, did they go away from doing the program where they used to do it, a grant cycle to remove?
I was gonna say that, so now they do it themselves. There was a time when they would give it to the county, we'd give them a list, and we give them money, we hire a contractor, blah, blah, blah. That was all FWC.
Okay.
So, I'm telling the governor, the governor has took a various.
So, can we just ask them to, to pursue that one, then?
Yeah, basically, I, I, after you've talked to his agreement.
Well, the problem, though, is the boats, I don't know how, how, how it looks because it's, it, for the owner, 'cause somebody who owns this boat, how does it work with that? 'Cause we're just taking this boat.
Oh, they'll go to the owner first.
Okay, okay.
They have to, yeah, the registration to check it, I think they have to try, two or three attempts they have to make.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see why he wouldn't want it removed, but never know, anyway.
It is a process.
All right, I, I'll, you want me to let you know after the meeting where it is, okay? Well, I'll, I'll get with John on tomorrow, but anyway.
Uh, Attorney Sore, yesterday I received a call from, uh, Mr. Marcus with, uh, consolidated.
Okay.
About the project they're doing on St. George Island with the, uh, high-speed internet. They were contacted by a rental company, basically, I guess it's over renting out a lot of houses on the island, about the, uh, there where the skinny minis are?
Uh-huh.
The brick pavers that were removed to do the work they needed to do. They wanna know if and when the county or the contractor was coming back to fix all their bricks. So, uh, I'll get with you later, but, uh, to give you the pertinent information, but I just wanna respond to that email, but I told the contractor when he called me, no, we're not landscapers, you're not landscapers, that's in county utility right of way. Uh, you know what I mean, but I told him, I said, no, don't worry about responding to them, we'll respond from the county level. So, I'll get with you about that, if that's okay, unless it needs board action.
Let's get more information first, I, I, I think I have a pretty good grasp on it and.
Okay. And, and the other thing, I've had several residents ask me recently, it's not to do with you, but it is to do with the state agency, DEP continues, I think it's DEP, or either somebody they've subcontracted, to spray some kind of herbicide or pesticide in the Apalachicola River for hyacinths. They're saying that's the way they'd get rid of them. The, the issue is, we got enough going on our bay without them spraying something directly into it that we don't know is impacting, you know, insult injury here. I, I don't know why they continue to do that, there's other areas around the state that have hyacinths, you can see them floating in the water and they're kinda left alone. I don't know if they're doing it for navigational purposes or, or other reasons, but, Mr. Rona, can we please have a conversation with them to find out what's going on with that?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's an issue or not, but people have brought it to me, multiple people have asked me.
You think it might be DEP?
Do I know?
You think it might be?
I think it might be DEP, yeah, but, you know, we need to, anyway, try to find out, at least so I can get an answer for the residents who are asking.
I'm, I may be wrong, I believe the hyacinths is an invasive aquatic plant, and it's a problem statewide, and I believe that's their justification for trying to eradicate it. Now, I don't know about what they're spraying or any of that, just giving you a little.
We still, don't we still have that ordinance tonight, the herbicides and all that? Within so many feet?
The spraying within the, the right of ways, like Duke Energy and the power lines, yeah, let, let me look at that.
Well, this is something we had on there for years, it talks about so many feet in the water and all that, so, so, yeah, he needs to look at that again.
They're spraying this on the water.
Yeah.
It's on the water.
Yeah, they're spraying it in the water, so, yeah, that's, that's the only, the only other thing I had. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
All right, any commissioner comments?
Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, we'll see you on the seventh, I'm on the, I'm on the hunting trail, and I'm trying to survive.
There won't be any deer left in the National Forest.
Nope.
Just the way it is.
State forest, but no.
Okay, okay.
But anyway, uh, yeah, and I'm looking forward to some cooler weather, I'm telling